We're just going to speak loudly. I will do my best to repeat what any council members are saying on the speakerphone. And we're going to go. So without further ado, it is now 6:36 PM. And I'm finally calling this meeting to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Here.
DePena.
Here.
Graziano.
Here.
Nitarri.
Here.
Robel.
Here.
Stromlo Burke. Mayor.
Is she in?
No.
Councilwoman Burke?
unmute your phone.
Now, is that muted?
No, you're unmuted now.
Now you're unmuted, that was good, so you're getting it.
Now put it back on mute, Marie. I am here. Sunshine notice, speak loudly, Madam Clerk, please.
Pursuant to the requirements of the open public meetings, our notice of this meeting was published in December 19 conditions of the store ledger and double times. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Belleville Town Hall bulletin board and a copy is on file within the municipal clerk's office.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I'm going to just quickly reset. We started about 30 minutes late. We do have four council members present, three council members on the phone. We have our clerk here, our township manager here, our township attorney here, our assistant manager slash police chief and deputy police chief. I'm just going to remind you guys in the audience that that microphone is going to pick everything up. Okay, so we're going to move right along. I'm going to speak as loudly as possible because we're having some, had some technical issues. So the first item, this is our council conference regular meeting. It's typically our first meeting in a month. At that time, you'll, you'll, council members discuss various topics. We do not vote on anything here, it's just discussions. I'm going to try and keep it fast and quick since we started a little late. The first item on my agenda is the street sweeper schedule and overall route. So the reason why I put this on the agenda, for a couple of reasons. One, we started street sweeping a little late this year with regard to enforcement. We had constantly been street sweeping during COVID, even though we're still in COVID, but we were not asking people to move their cars because we deemed that they were home from work. We saw that most people are actually out and about, and we had a public health issue where we needed to clean the streets. So we started cleaning the streets again. We gave adequate notice many times to robocall, social media posts, Facebook posts from the police department, from me, from everybody. And then for about a week or two, we did not issue any notices, but we issued some warnings to get people ready for enforcement. With that being said, we have now started enforcement, but now all of our social media advertising and noting has led us to uncover a deficiency in our street sweeper schedule because we have three zones, which would typically require three sweet sweepers, and we only have two. I learned this because I received a lot of complaints, as I am the chief complaint officer of the township, and a lot of people, which was good, they noticed that we were noticing people and the street sweeper never came. So that, our township manager got right on it, started talking with DPW. We are down a machine, but we actually realize now that after 20 years, maybe it's time to readjust. And we've tasked our very qualified township manager with talking with DPW and trying to figure out, maybe we do something differently, maybe we adjust the schedules. Keep in mind, if we adjust the schedule, it's also posting notices and signs everywhere. It's not an easy task. I will say one thing. The reason why I wanted to put this on the agenda is because I don't think the township realizes that we actually made a major improvement to our street sweeping program that really received very little fanfare. Historically, there's no street sweeping between 7:30 and 11:30 on certain dates, or 12:30 and 4 o'clock on certain dates. And no matter what time the street sweeper came, if the street sweeper came at 8 o'clock in the morning and you put your car back in, on the street, you were subject to a ticket because the sign says no parking between 7:30 and 8:30. We have increasingly become an urban town. Everybody has more than one vehicle in their household, and we realize parking is tight. Therefore, a pilot program that the manager with our chief instituted was, our enforcement officer actually drives with the street sweeper and only writes tickets to people that are out when the street sweeper comes. Nobody in the township knows this yet, but it's a very good thing that after the street sweeper comes, you can park your car back without warning, without, without getting a ticket or a violation. So that's something that I think, Anthony, we should promote more because I don't think people know that, and that's a very good thing. But really, I want, if you can just speak to the deficiency with the schedule and maybe some recommendations that you have or that, things you're already working to address.
Yeah, so clearly there is a challenge with our street sweeping, street sweeping operation. We had three sweepers approximately a little more than a year ago, close to a year and a half ago. We lost one of the sweeper, when I say it's 18 years old, and it can't get the parts, it just can't get it running.
How much is the new sweeper?
Approximately 350 to 375 thousand.
So we don't want to do that right now?
No.
Good.
Okay. So what, you know, and clearly what we're trying to do and what public works is trying to do the best that they can, and certainly it's a Band-Aid approach, but they were trying to do three routes with two sweepers. Obviously, there's not enough hours in the day in the schedule itself, so sometimes they would do alternating schedules. So it's zone A, B, and C. So Tuesday, this Tuesday, A and B got done, last Tuesday, A and C got done. So there's a lot of inconsistency, which certainly adds to the confusion, which adds to the complaints that.
And just so you know, Ant, and the rest of the council and those watching, the complaints are people are moving their cars, and then they literally wait for the sweeper to come to put the car back. We had two complaints on your block, Councilwoman, today. And the street sweeper doesn't come, and they don't know if they can put the car back, not put the car back. So it's a, it's something that we have to work out.
So what we, what we might have to do is, right now, we only have sweeping operations three days a week with schedules. Mondays and Fridays are not schedules, they just do main streets and they do additional streets without parking enforcement. So we may have to go and we may have to adjust the schedule with an add possibly another zone, which, or actually eliminate another zone and do sweeping on Monday and Friday as well. We have to come up with a better solution because right now, we're just not getting it done. As an FYI, this Thursday, we called in a private company who does privatization of street sweeping. They are in other municipalities, and they're going to do one of our routes. They're going to time them, they're going to give us a proposal.
And for right now, that will be just to pick up, pick up the slack that we can't get to.
Yeah. Thursday is just a test, but we may want to consider, since we don't want to file, we may want to give half of the route to a private company and see if it's cost efficient, cost effective. Again, obviously, money is always a concern, but we also want to provide a service to the community to have you with and that they see a good product.
Thank you. I'm going to try and move quick, council member, so I'm not going to ask every single person if they have any questions for the manager. This is a discussion. If you have something you want to jump in, jump in. If not, I'm going to just try and move quickly. The next item I have is item B, which is lists. This kind of came to a head last week between myself and the manager, because again, you know, I receive the majority of all complaints in town. I receive many, many complaints every single day about a wide varying array of issues. So I constantly get told that somebody calls the town, they call DPW, they call construction code. Actually, most of these are either engineering or construction or DPW. They constantly call up and say, my tree needs to get trimmed, my stump, my tree got cut two years ago, the stump's still sitting there. And people keep telling us that I'm on the list, and I'm on a list for two years. I've been on a list for four years. People have literally come to this building, shown me business cards of employees they've spoken to, and give me the date saying that they're on a list. So I kind of been explaining to people in a nice way that there are no lists. And I've asked Anthony to instruct our staff to stop telling people that they're on a list because there is no list. That's my opinion. I asked for a list. I received a list of dead trees. It was a list that came out of someone's head five minutes ago, and it was a list of five. I could tell you for certainty, there's more than five trees that have to come down. The two or three trees that I worked on a few, a few months ago with people weren't even on that list. So I've instructed the town manager to instruct the employees to stop telling people they're on a list because there are no lists. And I've asked the town manager, in conjunction with our new technology, not the audio video technology, which is great, we just got to fine tune it, but with our new technical upgrades here in Town Hall, with our new email system and new Office 365, that actually we can start lists. So I know, and I've seen some emails from the manager, he's asking DPW to start those lists. We should easily have a list of trees we have to cut. We should, we should easily have a list of trees we have to cut, we should easily have a list of stumps we have to grind, and we should easily have a list of streets that we're going to pave. Those things should be kept digitally, online, they should be kept in Microsoft Excel spreadsheets from some department here, and because of our new capabilities with technology, that file should be shared with the manager's office, elected officials, anybody that deems they need to see a list. And it'll be good for residents to know that they are now really on a list.
So, so if I may, good, good conversation. I get a lot of questions from residents when walking about trees that they didn't plant and trees that need to be cut, that whose responsibility is it? And I hear all different types of responses back. So is there a clear definition on a tree that is between the sidewalk and the curb? Whose responsibility is because I can tell you right now, I can walk on a sidewalk on a lot of streets and I can't get through because I hit my head. I could walk on the street and I hit my head. Whose responsibility is that tree?
I'll be corrected if I'm wrong, but it is the township tree on our right of way. While residents can choose to trim it if they want, technically, they're not allowed to. The problem with that is we no longer have a shade tree department, and every single issue, we have to then notify the manager. I was going to ask the manager and our DPW superintendent to join me on Hornblower, on the corner of Hornblower and Girolliman, and just take a one-block walk north on Hornblower to Division. You can't walk the sidewalk because all the trees are so low. So that's a pet peeve of mine, and the manager knows I'm constantly giving him individual trees. I would like DPW to get in a system where they grid the town out, because the same thing with these shooters on the bottom of the trees. This morning, you'll appreciate this, this morning, I asked the manager and our DPW superintendent that Division Avenue, from Union Avenue to the high school, all kinds of shooters, and then Liberty from Pesake to Franklin, shooters all, you can't even park your car. I would love DPW to get proactive with this stuff. I understand that they're usually driving from point A to point B to do something, but it's also frustrating that while they do respond to every single individual complaint I do, it's not sustainable that way. So I'm assuming that the manager has a recommendation or a plan.
Which leads me to my next question on this topic. Once a tree grows and it picks up the sidewalk, where and whose responsibility is that?
The tree at, correct me if I'm wrong, it's always the sidewalk is the homeowner's responsibility. Lately, lately, we have been assisting in raising the slab. We do have to kill the, cut the, cut the root, which kills the tree, and then putting the slab back down. We never assisted homeowners with that before. We are now, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Manager, we now have that ability to do that, correct?
We have the ability to do one and two slabs. Yes.
And if it really cracks the slab, we could do that. Even though it is the homeowner's responsibility, I feel for them, because if our tree cracks your sidewalk, I feel, I feel for them.
So they need to, they need to call in, log it.
Get on a list, sidewalk list.
Okay, good.
We do have somebody in DPW now that does do concrete. We did not have that for the last couple of years. It was an upgrade that this, this governing body acted on, and we do have somebody now that can do that. I don't want to read lips, so, and I don't know, I don't think I want to know, so, no. So that's a precedent, that's something the manager is willing to do for people. We also do, when we do roads, when we do this, the roads, we also do the sidewalks. So we're now going to look at maybe doing only the cracked sidewalks, so we have more money to do more roads. That's another topic, I don't want to belabor the point.
So you acknowledge that it's not the township's responsibility?
We do acknowledge that the sidewalk is not the township's responsibility. Right, right, it is not. It is not. If we have the ability to help someone out, but we want that to be widespread, we don't pick and choose. If it's a policy that the manager has, it's a policy we keep. We're not going to get into the picking, choosing game. So again, council members, jump in if you need to. If not, I'm really trying to move quickly. The next item I have, so Mr. Manager, I saw you taking notes. Can I see the notes? Do a better job of taking notes. I'm sure you'll watch the live feed tomorrow. The next one, we discussed this already in the work session, eliminating the metal security gates in front of stores. I just don't like it. I think it makes the town look rundown. I don't think they're needed. I think, I think it just adds, it brings negativity to property values. It's the broken window theory a little bit. And I am not, I know we're going to get some pushback potentially, but we have work sessioned this already, this is now the second time. We might get some pushback, so here's my compromise, is that we maybe come up with an ordinance outlawing them, banning them from stores that are vacant. This way, if someone has them now, because you might have somebody that rented a storefront and then paid to put them on, and they're there, but as soon as that storefront becomes vacant, like for instance, on the corner of Girolliman Street and Union, the old candy store that's there and the old computer store right next to it, they are both halfway down, crooked, broken, both stores are vacant. If we can, Mr. Attorney, if we can maybe consider something that we would ask everybody to remove them, but at a minimum, require them to be removed once a store is vacant, so this way the new tenant doesn't expect to have them. If you can ponder that?
Yes.
I'm moving on. I'm going quick. D, property maintenance, quality of life, Mr. Graziano. This is something that we were all just talking about. My issue with, with some of the property maintenance things that we just talked about, the trees, the shooters, that comes down to litter, comes down to graffiti. We are reactive, but I am also a crazy person that drives around all day taking pictures at red lights, texting the manager, taking pictures of overflowing garbage cans every single Saturday and Sunday, texting the manager, and the manager is very responsive to those things. But it's not sustainable. I can't keep doing it, council members can't keep doing it. DPW, again, I would love for them to be more proactive, but I do understand that they are driving from point A to point B to do something, and they're not necessarily thinking about that. So we have often, this is probably the fifth time we've work sessioned the topic of property maintenance. We've gone as far as to say maybe one part-time ward person. The manager and I have had recent discussions, maybe taking somebody from DPW and just assigning them that one job. But again, they have to be proactive. I'm only going to consider this. I'm not interested in hiring anybody new, Mr. Manager. I'm interested in potentially repurposing somebody or going part-time if we deem that's financially feasible, but I'm interested in somebody to be proactive. I know you've had some conversations with the town attorney about they have to be able to issue summonses or write letters, but we're talking quality of life, we're talking about graffiti. Again, broken window theory, I'm always pointing out graffiti, I'm always pointing out the shooters on the trees, I'm always pointing out the low hanging trees, the dead trees, people's grass. Now it's springtime. Are we spring or summer?
It's still spring.
Spring. I'm constantly pointing out grass that's three feet long, constantly. And you know what? We are responsive. A day later, it's usually cut, and we do a clean lean program. But it can't just be me, it can't just be the council members, it can't just be the manager. We need a proactive approach, so I'm calling it property management slash quality of life because we get the graffiti involved. But, Mr. Manager, I know we've tossed some ideas around. Again, I'm just reiterating, you don't have to explain anything now, I just want you to, I want to know that it's on your radar.
The town attorney and I have a rough draft, and hopefully at the next meeting, we'll be able to present something.
Awesome. Proactive would be key. We need somebody driving around. Grid the town out, take whole blocks a day, we need it. All right, lastly, I think everybody knows the answer to this question. I'm on item number E, if you're following the agenda. It is the painting of curbs and intersections this summer. We, I can't tell you the last time we painted a curb, besides a few weeks ago when we just started doing them again. So we need, parking is an issue. Again, I am the chief complaint officer. I get constant emails about parking, people parked at intersections, people parked in driveways. Was that you today?
No.
No. Somebody complained to me about parking in a driveway, accidents that happen near certain intersections because people park on top. And again, you have to understand, our police department is very open-minded, what's the right word, Chief?
Discretionary.
Discretionary. They utilize discretion. If the ordinance or the law says 25 feet, they're not getting out there and measuring. If you're 22 feet, if you're 20, 19 feet, they're probably, they understand this in urban community, they understand that we have a lot of cars, they understand that. But parking on a crosswalk, parking way too close to the intersection where it creates a traffic issue, where people can't see coming out of a stop sign, there's known traffic issues. I asked the chief a week or two ago to have his department, traffic department, come up with a study, identify some key intersection. I've already seen some curbs painted, so I thank you, Chief, for that. If you want to just quickly give an update, just speak up loud.
Based on the traffic study, we identified key intersections that needed to be painted, and we're in the midst of doing so, we're probably halfway done, we expect to be finished shortly.
So that's a good thing. And I know, now, obviously, I know that our summer program is somewhat in limbo, but traditionally, we would have summer kids. They might not be needed if we don't end up having a summer camp, but a lot of times, they're doing cleanups and all that stuff. They could easily be painting curbs, hydrants, I don't know if we do that as the fire department do hydrants or we do hydrants?
No, the summer kids would do that.
Summer kids do hydrants. So we could really, rather than working power tools that they don't need to be working at times, can of paint, I mean, plus, I also think that as crazy as it sounds, if you see fresh coat, a fresh yellow curb, you're less likely to park there. People may disagree with that, but on Girolliman Street, where my mother lives, heavy traffic area, Girolliman between Oak and Hornblower, those curbs there are so faded, you can't even see them. If they're bright yellow, it gives you a little pause that you might not necessarily park there. And again, our police department does a great job showing discretion. There, you know, if you're a few inches away, if you're a foot away, they're, they're probably going to drive by you, but if it's a known intersection, I know the chief's done a good job at identifying them, and I'm certain our guys are, and women are looking at that. So I'm assuming that that's working its way through?
The key intersections are getting done. And again, after we're done with that, we'll, if we're getting summer help, if not, we'll get it done throughout the whole town.
Great. Okay, I am moving on to item number two, Councilwoman DePena. So those of you who know, this is our caucus meeting, conference slash regular meeting. Any council member can put any topic on that they want. This one here was added by Councilwoman DePena. Councilwoman, you do not have a microphone. I do know that you can project, and I'm going to ask you.
Or am I projecting?
You're projecting there. So I'm going to ask you to just project.
Perfect.
And I know you can do that. And anybody that wants to entertain or jump into the conversation, I'm just going to ask you to speak loudly.
Awesome, I'll use my teacher voice.
Go for it.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to bring up a topic of conversation in echoing many concerns that I've received in the past few weeks, and in response to the many, the outcry of people's, you know, just their desire to know that our town is doing more in regards to remaining a safe place for people of all races, color, and making sure that our guidelines and policies are respectful of race and that they are, you know, fair for everyone. So I wanted to create the opportunity for us to have these conversations in twofold. First, I guess, you know, this would be for, for the manager in regards to the review of our policies in regards to anti-discrimination, anti-bias, and what do we already have in place in terms of the, the information that our departments receive? All the way from, I mean, we're all employees, the council isn't, we are employees, so all the way from the council to the last hire. So I have concerns in regards to the way we're communicating that information to the public, whether they're aware that there are certain things in place. So, you know, I don't want to take a whole lot of time, I'm kind of preparing the space for that conversation. I know some of it might continue in our next work session, but would you be able to speak to what we already have in place in regards to training for our, you know, our policies that we have in place and training for the departments in regards to being aware of those policies?
So the first thing that we have in place, and it is outdated, and Steve and I are presently updating it. We do have an employee manual. And in the employee manual, it actually spells out all sorts of sensitivity items, whether it's sexual harassment, whether it's discrimination, whether it's a hostile work environment. So the employee manual for the employees, that is in writing, okay? So we have policies that are actually in writing. Our JIF, which is our joint insurance fund, they require us to do annual training, and they actually provide us with the trainers, so it's at no cost because it's all included.
And this is training for?
For our employees. So our employees are in insensitivity training.
Once a year?
At least once a year. And the trainings consist of different topics, but again, it's, it's the topics that, you know, that you want to make sure that we're, we are correctly and.
So I've seen that, I've seen the employee handbook, and I know that we're working on that. But that's a global, we have hundreds of employees here, that's for everybody. To make the conversation a little more dated, timely, specifically, if we can have, and I think what the councilman proposes is just a better way for us to communicate to the residents what we have in place at all levels, whether that's employees, whether it's police department, fire department, whatever. I know, and again, I suffer at times from having the knowledge myself, because I was a councilman here 20 years ago, and I'm very, very involved in the day-to-day here, and I know these council members that have been here for a long time know the policies. I know you've been in public sector a long time, our attorney has, our chief, deputy chief. We know the knowledge, and I think to the councilman's point, sometimes we take, take it for granted that because we know it, the average person knows the training that we go through. And I think if we just had a page on our website that talked about what our commitments are, what we do training-wise, I had a feeling you might.
Stop talking for me.
Oh, my bad. But that would also loop into, that would also loop into police work.
That's right. No, but that is exactly where, what I wanted to bring up, the opportunity to communicate clearly with the public, because, you know, I participated in a rally on Saturday that happened here at Town Hall, and I was able to listen. I did a lot of listening because I think that sometimes there's time for speaking and there's time for listening, and a lot of the concerns that the residents had could be very easily addressed, could be very easily answered. You know, obviously, everybody has their own experiences with, experiences within the town, within the departments, with our own police department, and, and that's their story. But when it comes to us, our responsibility is to communicate what we're doing, to have specific guidelines that assure all of our members of our community that they have a safe place here in Belleville, that we're committed to that, and that we are reviewing and revisiting and updating whatever might need to be revisited. So I also wanted to bring up, maybe considering the opportunity to bring those trainings also to the council. You know, I think it's important that all of us receive those same trainings. I would like to, you know, even as a, as a minority, I think that it's important we deconstruct what we believe we know and understand everyone else's, you know, their experiences and what are better practices. So if we can consider that, I think it would be very beneficial for all of us. And, you know, just being able to communicate that information publicly, to have it on our website, a lot of the.
Point people to it.
Yeah, and point people, just in a way that's understandable, whether it is the data of our policies, whether it is, you know, any, any reforms in terms of what's happening with our police department. And I've had a lot of conversations with the chief in regards to the fact that this information is actually on our website already. So I, I know that people might not know that they can look at the reports of our police and, you know, what our record is, is like. So maybe we can explore a way that it could be simplified for the public to read and interpret the data that supports what we already know about our town.
I, I support it, I have a question. I might be wrong, Chiefs, I don't know. We are a certified?
We are accredited.
Accredited. Does that accreditation have anything, and I might be, does it have anything to do with advanced training or sensitivity training, or is that accreditation something totally different?
That is something.
Because it is very unique that we are an accredited department.
All trainers are required by the Attorney State, Attorney General, who's the chief law enforcement officer in the state of New Jersey. He sends down requirements and training mandates.
Once a year, twice a year, whatever it might be?
Whatever they might be.
And we check the boxes off that we meet?
Definitely, we have to.
Is that part of the accreditation, or is that something totally different?
Part of the accreditation, accreditation is a different type of standards that the New Jersey State Chiefs of Police mandate. For you to be a common accredited organization, they are guidelines and standards of how you would go about your mission of the training, and that's only one facet of it. But there are certain things you do in a police department to get quality standards to make you an accredited organization. The New Jersey State Chiefs of Police Association has these mandates that you follow. Once you accomplish that, you become accredited. But the Attorney General himself of the state of New Jersey, he has guidelines for all police departments that they must follow. And that includes training, sensitivity, sexual harassment, use of force, domestic violence training, I could go on and on.
I would like you to go on and on, not now, I mean, but I think that's the data.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to create the opportunity, and then we can go on to that conversation, maybe next week.
In the township above, and again, I'm not trying to blow my own horn, but the police department is the most trained and follows the most rules and guidelines in the whole township above. It's comparable to any other department.
Right.
That's a fact.
And we can, we can drill that down into a memo or a document or some kind of content that we could, that would be I would love to
If you go on our website already, we are very transparent. I plan on being even more transparent. And like, I too, councilwoman, was listening, I was at the rally also.
Yes.
And I too was listening to the protesters. I can't call them residents because I don't know all of them were residents or not. But I did, was listening to the speakers and protesters. And again, we can always do better. We have made significant changes since I've become chief. Can we do better? Absolutely, absolutely. And we plan to. So, and while being in attendance there, I've taken some action already. I've spoken with councilwoman. We plan on posting more on the website, even our use of force forms. Because that's been a topic of conversation since newjersey.com has put that up.
Chief, and if I may, I apologize for interrupting, but when you mentioned the word use of force, I think it might be beneficial for the community to understand what that means.
To be explained, yes.
What that means, because it was very eye-opening for me, and I don't know, I mean, I was
Use of force does not mean excessive force.
Yes, so
But the average citizen will relate it to that, they will.
So let me ask you something, chief. If someone is in a situation where they're in danger, they make a call to the police because someone is breaking into their home.
Yes.
And the police department has to arrest this person, this person resists arrest, and they have to use force.
A hold, a hold.
A compliance hold, is that, does that constitute a use of force?
Yes, ma'am.
And that is self-reported by the police officer?
We are required by the Attorney General, the highest law enforcement officer in the state of New Jersey, to do a use of force form.
Right, so
And we do. Moreover, moreover, if there are four officers assisting in that arrest, each and every officer must do a use of force form.
So one incident?
But that goes as four use of force forms.
One incident can generate five reports.
And it could be a compliance hold?
A compliance hold in response
I only have one copy, councilwoman, but I'll give you this, this explains it.
Absolutely.
But I think that's valuable information for people.
Absolutely.
2019, 52 use of force incidents.
It's not excessive force.
No, it's use of force, and I'd say 90, 90 something percent of them were compliance.
Compliance hold, which we self
I only have one copy, if someone wants to
Awesome, thank you.
I'm not quite sure the public understands that our own officers
But I plan on posting this on the website.
And that is important, that's how we communicate.
Our own officers self-report that themselves, which is what gets reported, right?
That's a bad thing, that's a bad thing.
So we self-report that, right? Okay, but I think that's a great
It's really interesting to know, I want to pass that around.
Yes, absolutely.
Out of 52 incidents, now mind you, if there were three officers, four officers, they all did use of force forms, which go to the state.
Forms? Even if they didn't use force themselves?
Sure they did.
Oh, okay.
If they assisted in officer
They weren't just there, they assisted.
Now, to have no use of force forms, to have zero, a police department, on every arrest they go to, they have to go, sir, ma'am, please put your hands behind your back, you were under arrest, and they would have to comply. And then the department would have zero use of force forms. So it needs to be put in perspective.
It's a great conversation now.
Yeah, absolutely, and chief, just to clarify, so compliance means
It needs to be understood, the average citizen and the public does not understand.
We should have, we should just have a, like a
I'm wondering if we might be able to have at some point, maybe the chief speak on that.
Questions, answers, conversation?
I mean, COVID put it on
I don't want to take all night, but I did want to at least begin the conversation.
We used to have them, COVID put a stop to that.
Of course, and we understand that.
But a virtual meeting is great.
Just to be clear, those 52 aren't by people who reported a use of force on them, right?
It's not excessive force, self-reported.
People think that
I know.
No, no, these aren't complaints, you use of force That would be a complaint, Steve. Right. It's not a town attorney, that, these aren't complaints.
I'm trying to clear that up, because people think that because you have, that 52 people reported that they were, force was used on them, that is not
Self-reporting by the officer.
It's interesting to know, however, on our website, it's now in existence, you can look up
Yes, I'm there right now.
Of excessive force and such.
All right, so we're going to, we're going to talk, I want to have a conversation.
It's there, it's been there.
Thank you, chief, thank you for answering some of these questions.
That is an accreditation standard.
Got you. So we're going to have a, like, we're going to have a
It's not mandated, that's just so you understand the difference. That, something like that is not mandated by the Attorney General.
Okay.
However, that is a standard you need to comply with to become accredited.
But we're going to have a conversation with the chief about stuff like this.
Yeah, natural discussion, so just to summarize, I did want to go back, so
It's my understanding, I don't need to interrupt you, councilman. It's my understanding, you have a public safety committee this time?
I'm unaware of it, but
My understanding, no?
But, I'll get to that.
We did. Maybe you should start one.
That's, that's something to consider. Mayor loves committees, I know.
I'm in favor of doing anything
Very effective.
I like a conversation with the chief, and it's a dialogue like we just had, but with statistics and numbers and forms.
And I know that COVID changes a lot, but I do want to, you know, I'm hoping that the manager will be able to provide us the opportunities in terms of training and what we can do better in regards to our policies. So maybe, if you can guide us as to where we can have those policies, so that maybe, you know, people can look at them and say, well, maybe we have to tweak this, this part to make sure that it reflects
Just one more thing, and I'll then, you'll see a lot of these here, the police were called. They were called to a call for service, bar fight, domestic, all right? So the majority of them, that's what they were, if you read this, read this.
So a bar fight, so
The police aren't just saying, hey, let's go arrest someone who used of force on them.
If I show up to, if I show up to a bar fight and the person doesn't give me their hands to arrest them,
You're doing a use of force form.
It's a use of force form.
And every officer that helps you make that arrest is doing use of force.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I did not know a lot of that, thank you.
I'm here to aid in any way in bettering our police department and maybe more transparent
And we thank you so much because the work is great. And we, we just want to make sure that the public is aware of that, thank you.
You can hear a kind of it so loud.
Mute, councilwoman?
Okay, so we're going to move on to executive session. We have no topics for executive session, thank God. No session for, no executive session. We're going to move on to item number six, which is the approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion made and second to approve the minutes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli, DePena?
Yes.
Raziana?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Grobell?
Yes.
Strumaloburg?
Yes.
Mayor Madel.
Yes. Next item, we have the report of the manager?
Sure. Members of the council, somewhat brief tonight, a couple of interesting items. And I know the mayor has, I don't want to take any of his items away, COVID-related, so to speak. But we are making great improvements within the community and within the state of New Jersey. The governor recently just lifted the stay-at-home order that has been in place since March 21st. So that, that order has been lifted. Certainly, we still encourage people when they're out in the public to wear face cards. The limit on outdoor gatherings, where, as of today, went from 25 to 100. So we're seeing some improvements out and about. And indoor gatherings are also being increased to 25% of building capacity, with a cap of 50. So those are all items that are happening in the community that are going to make it a little easier to move around. But at the same time, we encourage all our residents to continue to practice, say, social distancing. Today, we received our first reimbursement from the CARES Act, 332,000. 332,000 is for COVID-related expenses. So as much as our budget has been greatly affected by COVID, because the 332 represents just a small portion of money that we've spent to date, there will be hopefully some other additional reimbursements coming our way. We spoke about the $1.4 million. But it also does not address yet our revenue shortfalls. And still we're able to get a handle on what we are going to receive, and we are hopefully encouraged that we will receive the grant to offset the revenue shortfall. Our budget is in limbo right now. And again, Belleville is very, very similar to a lot of communities across the state of New Jersey because COVID has a detrimental impact on our budget. So we're trying to get a handle on it. We're still looking at ways of reducing our budget, trying to make up for revenue shortfalls. But the check for 332,000 today was helpful. The next item I do want to speak, we have about 70 streets that PSENG are working on in Belleville. It's actually a state program, just about every, every community that drives around, McDonald's and Linners, all the above. They're replacing the high, they're replacing the gas line, the old gas lines with high-pressure gas lines. This is great because it gives you, it gives residents better service and it's better for their appliances. The next step in the process, believe it or not, is to replace all of the old meters, new meters that have the technology that the meter meter doesn't have to come inside your home. That's the good news. The bad news is to actually have to go into your home to remove the existing meters. So PSENG is going to give us as much information and as much notice as possible. We will work with them for a community campaign, so to speak, to let them know when they're going to be coming into your neighborhood. You get a door, you get a door knocker, you get a letter and a phone call. They make an appointment before they come into your home. They go through a list of COVID-related questions to make sure they're safe, to make sure you're safe. And then, but part of the PSENG gas line expansion program is that they actually have to replace all of the gas meters in the homes. And that means they have to get into vehicles. So it is going to be, it's going to be a challenge, but this is something that has to be done. The gas meters are extremely old, and certainly this is part of the public utilities requirement when it comes with the utilities in Belleville. So those are the three major items that I wanted to talk about. I know we did cover a lot of the discussions and remarks by the mayor, and I'm sure there's other questions that are going to come up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I'm going to move on now to the report of the mayor. So I was first going to applaud and highlight our vastly improved audio/video capabilities.
Well, hopefully for next meeting.
I will say that the test, we know it all works, we just got to dial it in. Let's, I'm going to leave it at that. But for the next meeting, I expect a greatly improved audio/video system. Again, this is something that was bonded for and passed well over a year ago. We never had the ability to do audio/video upgrades in this room. And again, the audio/video upgrades are not just for the council, they're also for our court, they're also for our planning board and zoning board, a lot of new features. We could not do it while the room is constantly being used. We took the opportunity of COVID to do these upgrades, and I'm assuming for next meeting, we will have them. Mr. Manager, if you could just take some notes, I know I emailed you a few times today. Once again, some of our residents in the Mill Street and Brighton Avenue location are once again complaining about a systemic rat issue there. I've been there myself, I've had rats run over my feet while we were there. We need to either figure out what the plan is going to be for that. I received a lot of complaints over the weekend and yesterday about that. Something I was very proud of, yesterday, we did COVID testing here in Belleville. We brought that to our residents for free of charge. No symptoms needed, no appointment needed, no cost, nothing, just show up. I was there, I spoke to every single person that was online from about 10:00 to 10:30 to about 11:30. Worked my way from car one to the last car. It was great to see, it was very well organized, Mr. Manager. Police Department, as always, did a great job with traffic. But we actually tested 450 people. That was a great success for us. We do have some residents that are interested in additional testing. In two weeks, Essex County will be here at Hendrick's Golf Course with a mobile unit for testing with the county. You need to pre-register on essexcovid.org. Once we get some collateral marketing material, social media material, I will be sharing that. I'm assuming the township will also be sharing that, if need be. I believe we are also ready, willing, and able to bring in the group that we had to do a second round of testing, if need be. Something that Belleville's eagerly awaiting for, June 15th, is the opening of outdoor dining. I know every single person here is anxious for it. We can't wait to open up. I want our local businesses to do very well. Something that was brought up to my attention, the deputy mayor, for the last couple of meetings or so, has had stuff on the agenda about outdoor cafe permits. We've had the best initiative. Belleville was ahead of the curve when it came to helping our residents, helping our businesses out. So we have something called a sidewalk cafe permit, allows you to sit outside. I'll admit, it's not the easiest thing to get through with permit-wise from our construction code department, but we have relaxed some of those restrictions. So businesses can open up with a little less restrictions than normal. There is no fee associated to that. We will have a brand-new form on our website to download. There's currently a form called a license application for sidewalk cafe permit on our website. I think it's going to be updated a bit, so please check that. But Belleville was ahead of the curve, and I know that we're anxiously waiting to help all of our businesses out. June 15th, that's going to be it. We still do have masks available for seniors. They've been coming here to pick them up. We will hand-deliver them if they are bedridden, if they really need one. Really, we're not going to refuse anybody a mask. If you need a mask, senior or not, compromised immune system or not, you contact us, the clerk's office or the mayor's office, we will get you a mask. We actually handed out a whole bunch yesterday during the COVID testing. We are still contemplating, and we probably should have put this on for a discussion today. I know that public gatherings are going from 250 to 500 soon. And most towns have already jumped the gun, in my opinion, and canceled their 4th of July fireworks. I would love to be one of those communities to have 4th of July fireworks. I'm assuming it's a conversation that we're going to have seriously at our next meeting, but I've already asked the township manager to do some due diligence, to reach out to the company, to make sure that we can still hire them. I'm assuming we could probably get a good deal, Mr. Manager, because a lot of towns have canceled. It is a Saturday, if we can adhere to social distancing. I know the executive order has not come out yet, no. So everybody's reading a lot about now indoor capacity and outdoor capacity. Please know these are just press releases, they did come from the governor's office, but until our town attorney has the ability to review an executive order, that's where the details come in. So that's what we're waiting on, and I'm still of the like of the mindset, I'm assuming the majority of the council probably agrees with me, that we would love to pull off some kind of 4th of July if we can still do so. So I've asked the town manager to already do some due diligence on that. We've already discussed street cleaning, I'm not going to go there. The manager already mentioned, we received $332,000 in CARE Act money. I'm assuming while that goes into our general fund, it is not, we don't have that money to spend. That is reimbursed expenses, a portion of, probably does not even get us there, but that's probably a portion of reimbursed expenses. Lastly, you cannot forget census. A lot of my mayors called today, discussed census. We do have a census event coming. It's going to be a pop-up event, it's going to be socially distanced, it's a secret. Only myself and the manager, I believe, are aware of what exactly it is. Do we have a date that we're willing to say?
It's June 20th, a Saturday?
Is June 20th a Saturday?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
June 20th is a Saturday.
Secret, secret.
Pop-up event.
Pop-up.
Census.
Townwide, socially-distanced census event. That's all we're going to say?
But we also might need six councilpeople to help decorate.
Okay. DJ will be involved?
DJ will be involved.
And that's all we're going to say at this point. So that's our census event, we, our numbers are, we're in the 60% range. 10 years ago, we hit 68 or 69%. We have to hit 70-plus, people, have to do it. I have my own crazy event coming. I'm not even sure the manager knows, and I know I haven't told the police department yet, but I will need their help. I have a very non-traditional, may oral census event coming. More on that after our June 20th event. So that's it for my
Mayor, may I chime in just in regards to the census? I did want to just remind the community that you must be counted regardless of your, you know, whatever of your status in this country, and that's important. Yo creo que todo el mundo sepa que usted tenga papeles o no, usted se puede contar. And that's important, you know, I need everyone, and I'm just saying, the same thing that I said in Spanish, I said in English for those taking notes. I want my community to understand that, that, you know, no one is going to ask you that, that, you know, no one is going to ask you what's your legal status in this country, but it matters because you attend our schools, because you use the services, and we want to be able to provide you better services, and we can't do that unless we get the funding to do that. So I just wanted to write upon that. Thank you.
That's a valid point, and I'm also told in my mayor's call today that census takers will be coming out. They will be going door-to-door shortly. So anybody that has not self-reported, you will, if you live in a special, in a special target area and/or district, and we know what those districts are, you will get someone knocking on your door trying to get census, and I'm glad the councilwoman clarified that. It does not matter your status, does not matter, does not matter at all. None of this information is ever shared with other authorities. This is all about getting an accurate count, which really comes down to funding for us. So we want everybody counted. We want to be well north of seventy percent. That is it for my mayor's report. We are now going to move on. Let's keep it quick if we have any reports. I'm going to start, councilmembers that can hear me on the phone. I'm going to start here with councilmembers that are present, beginning to my right with the deputy mayor. Anything for a committee?
Real quick, you mentioned the best task force. We had a meeting the other day, myself, the mayor, the manager, and twenty-five business owners. Very successful Zoom. It was all virtual, all over Zoom. We gave them a lot of good information. We got some good feedback from them, so that was good. Right after that, myself and the mayor jumped on another Zoom meeting with Senator Ruiz and the mayor of Newark and also the state director of economic development. They presented to us their new plan that the first round of funding for small businesses was for five million dollars. This next round is going to be for fifty million dollars, so that's a ten times, tenfold amount. So all you have to do if you have a small business here in New Jersey is go onto the state EBA website and you could apply if you haven't done yet. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman, councilwoman's done. Councilman, Graziano.
Just an update on the technology. We went ahead and we're completing with...
That the audio/video portion of the...
With the mail rollout. So all of Belleville now, when I say Belleville, I mean, right across the township here, we're upgraded to our new mail, the second phase, which is underway. We're waiting right now to give out hardware, laptops, updating the laptops, new desktops, laptops, and hardware for each employee, which will have standard security and operating systems on it. So we're in that second phase. So that's the update for the technology as of now.
Can you pick out somebody on the phone?
Yeah. All right. So now we're going to go, if you guys can hear me. We're going to jump on to our councilmembers on the phone. Steve, you have anything?
Yeah, man, I just wanted to talk fairly quick about the GIP. I know Anthony mentioned it, but we're doing a lot of work with the GIP as far as training, relative sharp training and other types of training, including safety. But we can also bring it up with the GIP to see what other things we've been doing with the GIP. One of the things that came out about five years ago was working with the police department and getting that accreditation, which basically takes us to a higher level of following. So I give Chief a lot of credit for that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, no, that was great. I remember when we first started that. That was a good initiative. All right, councilwoman Marie, are you there? Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
You have any updates on anything?
Well, I don't have the committee report, but I do have graffiti that's been on Franklin Street. It was taken care of by one of our president.
Did you say graffiti?
Graffiti on Franklin Street.
Yeah. Somebody can just repeat what the councilwoman's saying.
So there was graffiti, there was been an issue on Franklin Street, and Councilman Burke worked with the property owner and the commercial business owner, and they actually did it on their property as well as their neighbor's property.
So I'm very happy about that.
Yes. Anything else, councilwoman?
No, that's it.
Did we get everyone? Councilman Natarri, you're up next.
Yes. At the last, it's not a committee's report, but at the last meeting I asked about, we were going to, we didn't have anything up to that. If we're going to have the summer camp for the kids next time, that's I would know, and if we were, where we're going to hire kids for summer help. Where are we at this point with those?
So we have not been, as much as the governor said that summer camps can go forward because we have not been able to get a clear, definite answer of some of the guidelines to go along with the summer camp. Right now, we are not scheduled to be, to have a summer camp in place, probably not for July. We may be able to do a abbreviated program when we get more specifics from Trent. But right now, there's nothing planned, but we are monitoring it very closely. And even if we did some day activities and some, you know, some pop-up events, so to speak.
Manager, if I may, the new guidelines were just posted at the health department website today.
Today?
Today, yes. It changes every day.
We will have an update for you.
Yeah, I did hear that. Okay, so you'll have an update. Yeah, I hope you can have some stuff associated to it. In the house is March, and it's going to be a long summer.
Got it.
Where are we on now? Communications. Do we have any, thank you, councilmembers. Do we have any communications? Just give me one second. I'm still trying to get. Something happened. I put them behind. Oh, no. What's that? I know. Now I screwed it up. So we have no communication. So we are moving on to item number eleven? Ordinances. Ordinances for introduction.
Ordinance number one for introduction, ordinance to amend it, ordinance creating permanent positions and adopting reclassification and compensation plans.
There's a motion to open for...
Second.
We have a motion made and second to open for introduction. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natarri.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumloberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Just in case anybody's wondering, I believe that's a reduction. Mr. Manager?
Yes, it is. It's a reduction of five thousand dollars.
I know we usually discuss it on second reading, but why not head some of that off? We are once again amending the salary ordinance to reduce a position. Okay. So now we're moving on to ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading?
Yes.
I'm going to ask the clerk to read our COVID disclaimer.
Due to multiple executive orders declared by Governor Murphy and in an effort to prevent further spread of COVID-19, the June ninth to twenty-twenty Township Council meeting will be closed to the general public. This meeting will be live on the township's website, www.bellvelandj.org, as well as the township's official Facebook page. The public always has an opportunity to make public comments to the mayor and his council during public hearings. With this new format, if you have a comment, please submit it to the township clerk at kcapitol@bellvelandj.org by 6:00 PM on Tuesday, June ninth, twenty-twenty. If there are any comments or questions on the ordinances for public hearing, the second one reading, please submit it as well to the township clerk at kcapitol@bellvelandj.org by 6:00 PM on Tuesday, June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty. The township clerk will read to the record your comments or questions concerning the ordinance for the public hearing and will read your comments during the public portion of the meeting. Please submit your name, address, and state per comment.
Thank you. Ordinance number one?
Ordinance number one for public hearing, ordinance of the mayor and council of the township of Belleville, County of Essex, New Jersey, amending the Belleville Township Code to establish a tax evasion program pursuant to the five-year extension of evasion law, NJSA forty-eight calling twenty-one dash one et cetera.
Motion open for public.
We have a motion made and second to open for public. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natarri.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumloberg. Mayor Melham.
Yes. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments for this particular ordinance?
I'm double-checking.
Who else has a copy of that packet?
Everyone.
Can somebody, I just want like a double check to make sure.
You need it?
No.
There's no one. Nothing for one.
There was nothing for one.
Yeah, because I don't want to do a second reading and then we have, we miss somebody. Okay. So we have no comments on that, so I'm going to ask for a motion to close public commenting and move for an adoption. Do I have that motion?
Yeah, motion to open.
Second.
We have a motion made and second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natarri.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumloberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance is approved. Ordinance number two for public hearing and ordinance creating a five-year tax exemption of local real estate taxes pursuant to NJSA forty-eight calling twenty-one dash one et cetera to Bridge Acquisition LLC for improvements on real property located at block nine-one-zero-three, lot one, and authorizing execution of a financial agreement of Bridge Acquisition LLC.
Motion open for public.
Second.
Motion made and second over public. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natarri.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumloberg. Mayor Melham.
Yes, we are now open for public commenting on this particular ordinance. Madam Clerk, do we have any questions on this one?
Yes, I have a question from Vincent Fran Santoni, one-twenty-nine, now Prospect Avenue. He says, what property is this for?
Is that, hold on, let me find it. I don't have that one. In the ordinance packet, I want to make sure I see the whole. Hold on. Last one? Ordinance number two, public hearing. What property? So the only question is that?
Yes.
What is this property for?
What is this property for?
This is commonly known as the twenty-four-acre site down on Main Street. Sometimes we call it the Walter Kitty property. Sometimes we call it the Finkelstein property. That is the twenty-four-acre site that has been underdeveloped and not developed for the last fifty or so years. And again, I've often said that this council is the first council that's going to get a development there and get a ratable for our township. So that is going to finally see that built. That is the, that's it. That's the answer to the question. Any other questions?
No, you don't have any.
No? You guys are sure? That's good. Yeah, I want to double check, triple check. Okay.
Yeah.
They are. Okay, so I need a motion to close public and move for adoption.
So move.
We have a motion made and second to both close public and move for adoption.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natarri.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumloberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance is approved.
Not, not all pilots are bad.
Ordinance number three for public hearing and ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the township of Belleville, chapter eight dash six A stop sign interception designated.
Can I have a motion to open public commenting?
Motion open.
Second. Motion made and second. Clerk, call the roll to open for public.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natarri.
Yes.
Strumloberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Madam Clerk. Madam...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Clerk, do we have any comments for this one? We already had our full of comments.
No, I do not.
We tried, Chief.
I would prefer to call the party and move to final adoption.
Hold on. Okay, so I'm sorry.
He made the motion.
He made the motion. So we have a motion to close public commenting and move for final adoption. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natarri.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumloberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Chief, are you going to make that call tomorrow?
Oh, okay, yeah, I'll take care of that, yeah.
Ordinance number four for public hearing and ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the township of Belleville, chapter eight dash six A four-way stop interceptions designated.
Motion open for public hearing, second.
Motion made and second to open public hearing. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natarri.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumloberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Madam Clerk, do we have any questions or comments?
I'm double-checking.
On item four, we have double checks, triple checks?
There isn't any.
So Chief, this is something that I, most, we don't understand this because we just sit up here and see these things on our agenda. How do these come about? This is because of traffic studies or known accidents or requests?
These were, they come about based on complaints.
Then we do a study.
We do a study.
Hotspots.
Hotspots. They don't fall out of the sky. There's, there's work that...
From complaints.
Okay. But the, I mean, a lot of people complain. These are then just found to be justified or warranted or some, close enough. Twenty years ago, when I was on the council, local municipalities could not do a four-way stop sign. I'm assuming that changed. I hope that changed. Okay.
Are we cool for a motion? Are we...
I refrain from comment.
On the grounds... On the grounds...
Clarify.
Okay, so there are no, we clarified there are no public comments besides my comments. So I need a motion to close public comments and move for final adoption. Motion made and second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natarri.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumloberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Ordinance number five.
For public hearing and ordinance, amending the revised general ordinances of the township of Belleville, section twenty-three dash eight point two A as to definition of sidewalk cafe.
Motion move for public.
We have, we have a motion made and second to open public commenting. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natarri.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumloberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
I do have a comment.
Madam Clerk, do we have any comments or questions about ordinance number five?
Yes, I do.
How many?
One. I have a comment from Victor Mafucci, and he lives, he lives on Fox and El. I know that. He didn't provide his address. Okay, his question is, a cafe must have a partition space on the sidewalk for tables. In your opinion, won't this prevent a considerable number of food establishments from the ability for outdoor dining?
What do you mean by partitions?
The ordinance will help.
That's what, he's talking about the ones that are current ordinance, wants that section off. Our new ordinance, or, no, the newer, the new ordinance has nothing to do with the partition. They still have to comply in terms of certain of the requirements for a sidewalk cafe.
Right.
Because otherwise, you'd have, you'd have to have some organization and, you know, walkways for people to walk and portions of sidewalk. Those are all. What we expanded was where you can have the sidewalk.
I think it's safe to, just the gist of this ordinance is to assist and cast the water net and allow more businesses to open up. So when you were restricted, maybe you couldn't have it on the side.
Exactly.
But we're just kind of in the back.
But you still need a partition.
Still need partitions. You still need an application from our construction code, but we're, we're...
We'll also assist in, partitions are also going to assist in social distancing and making able to make up the areas that they need to...
The nature of this ordinance is to expand and make it easier for anybody, especially because outdoor dining is now coming. And again, I think...
So I guess he needs to know that it was always in the ordinance.
It was always in the ordinance. Partitions were always there.
Right.
And it's going to help even more with social distancing.
I think he knew that, but he, because he says he knows it, that that partition obligation is in there, but it had to remain in order to do it appropriately.
Right, and we waived the fee.
And we waived the fee. Okay. Any other questions? No other questions? No? I don't want to miss anybody. Okay, so motion, I need a motion to close and move for final.
So move.
Motion made and second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natarri.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumloberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Ordinance number six.
For public hearing and ordinance creating chapter 35 entitled Vendors Mobile.
Hey, I'd like to make a motion to table this.
There is a motion made in second to table, that has to go to a vote.
Do you discuss?
No. There is no discussion. Discussion would be, you say no, and then we can have a discussion afterwards. So there's a motion on the floor to table, it received a second, I have to call a roll on a motion to table. Yes would be tabled, no would be to move on. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Uh, yes.
DePena.
No.
Graziano.
No.
Nattari.
No.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumaloburg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
No. Now can I, failed? Okay, now we need a motion to open public commenting.
Motion?
We have a motion, need a second, we have a motion made in second, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumaloburg.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Madam Clerk, do we have any questions?
I have several.
Several.
The first one I have is from Mario Drawes from 95 Bell Street. He asks, how many days a week will the vendors be at the Old Pistol Range? Please provide details. How are they going to go to the bathroom when needed? What sanitary facilities will there, will they have if any? Did the township receive a grant to make that property a playground and garden?
Uh, Steve? Yeah, first one. How many days a week, is it still kind of, I know we discussed days, week and hours, but that's still kind of open. Just speak up, make sure we get caught.
Uh, yeah, I'm going to pull it up because...
Yeah, so while he's, while he's pulling that up. Yeah, while he's pulling that up, just to give an overview of this. Uh, the Pistol Range used to be a field 20 years ago, got wiped out during hurricane, never got remrestained because it's a flood area. We have applied for and received some funding, uh, with Green Acres and something else maybe, to create a nature preserve. I have seen the plans for that, it would be a nice spot. Uh, the goal would be to get people to go to that spot, and we still have a parking lot and a playground in that area. So it's not quite just 100% a nature preserve, there's also a parking lot and a playground in that area. So, the thought was, we would be a very innovative, progressive-type township and have a food truck area. We debated a couple different areas, we've landed on this one for now. Uh, the council has the right to set hours, we haven't done that yet. Set, oh, we have? Oh, the ordinance has it? Okay. So, hours and days, but we don't have a, I'm sorry, what I meant to say is we don't necessarily have a start date yet.
We don't, there's a, it won't be at least until September 1st. If the council puts, if the manager puts out the, uh...
Right.
The application for the locations and bids, then it would be, if the manager doesn't put that out, then it doesn't go into it.
Right.
Manager has to be there.
So we do not have a start date yet for this, uh, we're going to give it a season. If we like it, we bring it back. If we like it and we don't think it belongs there, we move it somewhere else. It's not, to me, it's, it's, I used to live right on the block, I would have loved to have it there. Um, I know Councilman, uh, Revell's had some concerns. We've talked about it, I've talked to him with the deputy mayor, we've emailed about it. I, I, I understand and respect his concerns on this. Uh, but I think it's a pilot, I'd like to see it get done. If, and then we reevaluate, if it doesn't work, if it belongs somewhere else, if it doesn't belong at all, uh, if we have to make adjustments. I'm assuming there's going to be porta-johns there, just like everywhere else. I'm assuming that our, they're going to have to abide by our health regulations, just like the Food Truck Festival, just like Just a Party, just like every other food truck or every other concession trailer has to have. They're going to have to abide by health regs and...
Fire inspections.
Fire inspections, health regs. Porta-johns will be there, I know that they are going to pay a lease to be there, I also know they're responsible for their own garbage collection. At the end of the day, uh, minimal, minimal maintenance from our DPW. Maybe we're going to put some picnic tables there, it's an in-and-out, people don't stay, there's no loud music. Uh, generators will be off, off premises, these are very quiet generators, you will not hear them. And, um, I'd like to give it a go. So I think we answered, uh, so do you have a specific on this?
Every day, uh, they can only sell from, um, 10, uh, 11 to 7. But they can get there early to set up and clean up after between 7 and 8.
And if we don't like that and we ever want to change this, we can.
We can always change.
Thank you. Uh, we've covered bathrooms, we cover sanitary and a grant, yes, we are receiving a grant, uh, not for the playground. We're only receiving a grant, I've seen the, the, the plan, the plan is just for the grass area. And that's what we're receiving some funds for to do. Um, I think it'll get people there, I, I would argue that far more people will visit this nature preserve because of there's a draw there, as opposed to just wandering there themselves for no apparent reason. Um, that's my gut. Uh, do we have any other questions on this one?
Yes, we do. Next one is from Victor Mafucci from Continental Avenue states. Am I correct that you will permit up to four vendor trucks? Will they be parked on a paved area, a green area, or on a new paved area for the use? If in the existing paved area, how much space will be left for the customer parking? Has any consideration been done for the Rutan's residents whose backyard faces this area?
So I could probably take most of these. Uh, will permit up to four trucks, we don't necessarily have to have four trucks. They will be parked in the paved area, not on the green area. The paved area which, uh, more than likely they're going to end up on the north side, which would be the Nutley side of the parking lot. Uh, again, the existing paved area, uh, the entire other half of the parking spa, parking lot will be for customers. Again, this is a lot of in, in and go. Uh, Rutan Estates residents, they really don't, backyards don't face this area, some of them in that area, the Rutan Estates area, they actually abut the field area. But there's nobody, there's no homes within close proximity to the parking lot at all. You get to that parking lot from Giralahm Street as it turns into Bloomfield Avenue.
And it'll be closer to a baseball field.
And there'll be a landscape buffer in between also.
Okay, we have anything else, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we do. Next one is from Chris Gossup from 85 Ute Road. He states, as a resident of Bevel for 20-plus years, I am deeply concerned about the proposal to make the Old God Range Park a designated center for food trucks in a highly residential neighborhood. The following location is between Plymouth Road and Nutley Drummer Street, Morris Road and Hoover Ave, Hoover Avenue. Due to location and other reasons listed below, I can concur that the outcome of this proposal will be negative. One, it is my understanding that this area has been designated, designated as a stewardship grant for an educational nature, nature work. Two, the levels of noise and air pollution caused by trucks of this kind would increase due to generator usage. This is harmful for the environment and a distraction to surrounding neighbors. Three, as a resident in the area, we currently have issues with waste being left behind from local fast foods and related establishments. Excessive litter is left behind for homeowners to continuously clean up. Food trucks in the post area will plague this current situation. In our current time, many local businesses are struggling and should not experience any form of further competition. The Township of Bevel does not have enough local natural parks that permit residents the ability to walk, exercise, and simply enjoy the beauty of their own environment. These, these open areas are extremely important to our town. I would like to suggest sharing information before implementing this proposal, along with a ballot for residents to vote upon the topic. When speaking to my neighbors, no one had ever heard of this proposition. With such taxes, this is merely a decision between benefiting the natural environment or polluting the intended area. Food trucks are innovative and trending during holiday or outdoor events. If this is a consideration in our town, they should be placed in a more industrial, non-residential area to eliminate neighboring environmental risks.
That's it?
No, no more?
No, I mean, that was the final. I think a lot of the, I, I tried to highlight as you were going, a lot of the concerns have already been addressed. Uh, designated a stewardship grant, uh, that's not, not where this is going. That was the land, the grassy area itself. Uh, we have actually reached out, because again, Councilman Revell did raise some valid concerns, uh, to me. And, uh, I communicated with our town attorney, I communicated with our town engineer. Our town engineer did confirm that Green Acres would be okay with this, we have to jump over a hurdle or two, we have to just show them the leases and they have to okay them. But again, we did confirm that we're not using any of that money for the parking lot area. Therefore, the stewardship grant should be totally fine. Uh, because we are putting it near Giralahm Street and/or Bloomfield Avenue where it turns, I don't believe noise is going to be an issue. Uh, again, waste being left is something that we've maintained that the food vendors will be responsible for. There will be fines in place if they do not, but we do expect some DPW support to be there, to make sure that there's no waste left behind, that there's no litter. Nobody's more crazy about litter than I am, trust me. I could assure you that, that, that'll be taken care of. And, and I don't think that, you know, we have not set a start date yet. So if we do start in September, I hope and pray that our local businesses are up and running. But if they are still, and I shared my concern with Councilman Revell, uh, via email today. You know, if, if our businesses are open and if they're only open at 50% capacity, we only have so many restaurants in this town that can fill a half dining room. We have far more residents that would be looking for somewhere to go and something to do. And I'm not sure who's going to bid on, on this, but I do know of at least one food vendor that it's actually a Bevel resident and a Bevel business owner. And I hope he does, uh, support this. And lastly, you know, I would say that, uh, to Mr. Cosup that it's a pilot. We're going to give a, a really good evaluation of how this thing is proceeding and a really good evaluation after it ends, probably in the wintertime, uh, before we come back and do it automatically. We're, we're going to take a look at it, if it's not working, if there's a lot of, uh, residential issues in that area, I could assure you that Councilman Revell, uh, will be once again representing those, those concerns. And, uh, this council, if we decide to approve, will then reevaluate in the future. Um, so I think that was it for that particular comment. Anybody else on this ordinance?
Yes, the next one I have is from Gabrielle Bennett Dini from 162 New Jersey. I'd like to make a statement about the rifle range property which I volunteered to research and come up with the concept for a project around this site. A project was submitted last year under the name The Rifle Range Preserve, Bevel's first-ever nature park act that, parked to the New Jersey Department of Green Acres Program for a local government stewardship grant, which the Township of Bevel was awarded. I don't live in the area of the historic rifle range, but I know the property well because seven years ago, my daughter and some of her teammates practiced softball on the field. Every time I visited the property, I admired how perfect it was. Nestled between the utility rifle way, small woodland, and a hill boasting trees and shrubs. I IDed all the plants and known several species of birds around the site. I wondered if anyone else looked at it the way I did. It's what made me suggest Bevel's first-ever nature area for this site. A fitting project for a property sitting vacant for many years with flooding issues due to poor drainage lying in, lying in the safe watershed. This is probably why it ha, it hadn't been recommended for any other use. I compared pictures what I envisioned when I designed it. A path that winds around the whole field in a large circle. Along the path are native flower gardens, pollinator gardens, shrubs and trees, seeding areas and interpretive signage. The old bleachers, when it was used as a golf field, stay intact with some returbing of the wood which forms the bench. The space directly in front of the bleachers is a remnant of the old baseball diamond that was once there. Its outline is still visible, it makes it a focal point in that spot. Around that area, a large area is a border of native shrubs. This is the place for small gatherings that could include education classes or lectures on a variety of topics, such as gardening, gardening for wildlife, composting, recycling, energy, water conservation, redesign, and the many other sustainable topics that have become important to a sustainable future. I also think of yoga or meditation classes or listening to music or outdoor art lessons. However, we see things fitting into this project, I just wanted you to know that I was, what I was thinking when I was creating it. Do you know this is what our neighbors in Bloomfield submitted funding for? Bloomfield Township Third River Park Trail, Bloomfield Township seeks funding to create a trail and interactive outdoor learning experience for all ages at the Third River Park and Preserve. The completed trail and associated amenities will enrich environmental education activities and programming to support stewardships of the natural environment. Plans include a walking path and trail, installation of a boardwalk and observation deck, educational signage, native plantings, and flood plain stewardage restoration. $286,968 managing grant award stewardship project urban aim. And there were, and there were, were many other communities' representatives who had took the time to think about projects that would protect and provide outdoor environment education opportunities and submit those ideas to the NJDEP Green Acres Program, hoping to get much-needed funding to support their plans. Bevel's grown, governing body, and our residents should be extremely excited that we have an opportunity to increase our own open space areas with conservation in mind, just like other communities. I've seen how difficult it is to balance some of the last open space places and learned that no matter how big or small they are, they need a lot to the people and wildlife that use them. The Green Acres Program was created to meet New Jersey's, New Jersey's growing conservation and recreation needs. Green Acres is committed to preserving New Jersey's rich natural, historic, and cultural heritage. Hundreds of thousands of acres of conservation and recreation lands have been preserved and hundreds of public parks have been developed with Green Acres funds.
That just came in under five minutes? Uh, you're right, you're right, there's, it's, it's, it's an ordinance for second reading, no restrictions. Gabby, you're lucky. Uh, I, I will say that, uh, I know Gabby very well, uh, she's a perfect person to head this project. Uh, she's on our green team, uh, she works for the Meadowlands Environmental Center, I know it's called something else today. She's the perfect one for this project, and her and I have had conversations about this, we've had some debate about this project. Initially, we were going to put it here, and, uh, then she, she offered an alternative location. I actually liked, she sold me on that alternative location, but unfortunately, we legally couldn't put it in that ulterior, alternative location. We ended up back here. Uh, so she has pushed back on this a little bit, she has made me promise her that we will not touch her park. Her park will be a nature preserve, I've given her my word, I've given her my commitment, the neighbors have our word, our commitment, that, uh, we will intervene if for some reason this does not go exactly as planned. Do we have anything else, Madam Clerk?
I do not have anything else for this ordinance.
Okay. Without further ado, I'm going to entertain a motion to end public commenting and move for adoption.
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion made in second, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
No.
Strumaloburg?
No.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Ordinance number seven.
Ordinance number seven for public hearing and ordinance amending the revised general ordinances of the Township of Bevel, Chapter 2, Section 8.
Make a motion, open.
Open, open.
Second.
We have a motion made to open public commenting, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumaloburg?
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Do we have any comments?
I have several. First one is from Mario Drawes, 95 Bell Street, and he asks, what is the difference between the current historical committee and the proposed one this evening?
I'm going to defer that to learned council.
There is no difference, um, rather than just delete a large section of that ordinance, I just, uh, reinserted the exact language for both the historic preservation committee as well as the rent levelling board and renumbered the paragraphs, that's the only change, other than the renumbering of the paragraph.
We were basically moving from point A to point B with no changes to historic, uh...
Or rent levelling.
Committee or rent lev, no change at all to either boards.
To either one.
Just to clean up, moved it from point A to point B.
Exactly.
Okay. Madam Clerk, any other comments?
Yes, next one is from Victor Mafucci from Continental Avenue, and he asks, are you doing away with the zoning and planning boards? If so, will you move, deny, or amend applications? If not, explain the changes.
So it's an easy one, we are not at all doing away with planning board or zoning boards. So that takes care of that, if not, explain the changes. We had two competing ordinances, we had an ordinance called Chapter 2, we had an ordinance called Chapter 19. Chapter 2 is not only outdated, but it no longer conforms to the state, uh, state guidelines, the makeup of the board is different, the number of members on the, on the planning board is different. We do not have a director of planning, we do not have a planning department. Our construction official, in his capacity sitting with the planning board, does not sit as a class 2 voting member. So for many reasons, Chapter 2 was outdated, and we had Chapter 19, which is not outdated, which more closer, closely conforms to the state law. Uh, so we are not doing away with planning board or zoning board, it's a clean up because this is not the only competing ordinances that we have, but we had a competing ordinance. This one, if we want it to, if the council votes this change down and we keep this on the books, all it's doing is taking up paper in our ordinance books because it cannot be adhered to. in our ordinance books because it cannot be adhered to. Mr. Attorney, am I correct? Anything to add?
That's correct.
Thank you.
It had glaring errors in it, and frankly, from what I could tell, it's never been followed since the day it passed.
Any, any other questions?
Yes. The next one I have is from Michael Sheldon, 47th Floyd Street. In regard to this ordinance which deletes in its entirety Chapter Two, Section Eight of the Township's Administrative Code, this then removes the correct legal, legal statement and basis for the appointment of the best board members in the planning board, which according to both the Faulkner Act and three existing ordinances previously presented to this governing body is a collective shared responsibility of all seven council members, if not the mayor alone. While you previously refer to this deletion as a cleanup, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm sure one day some, soon the courts will prefer, your real intention here in deleting this section of the Administrative Code is to sweep under the rug the correct legal planning board appointment procedure in favor of Chapter Nineteen, which is currently in complete contravention of legal statute in this regard, goes here in intent. If it were your intention to circumvent the law here, then you would simultaneously carry over the correct planning board appointment wording from Chapter Two, Section Eight to Chapter Nineteen while, while you are proverbially cleaning up things. Is Mr. Martino willing to go on record while putting his law license on the line and denying that the real purpose of this ordinance is to further help his client assert planning board appointment authority from the other six council members?
Okay, I'm not sure. I don't necessarily see a direct question that hasn't already been addressed. I will say that we keep referring to state law, and I would encourage anybody out there to Google Title Forty, municipalities and counties, Section Forty, colon, fifty-five D, dash, twenty-three, planning board membership, and state. The state statute for a Class Four member says other citizens in the municipality to be appointed by the mayor. Or, in the case of council manager former government, a lot of other things. As if the council manager former government has an ordinance saying it's a council appointment. Our ordinance nineteen actually says it's the mayor's appointment, which, which confirms exactly what the state statute, Chapter Forty, says. So, Chapter Forty says it's a mayoral appointment. Chapter Nineteen, which we have, didn't actually have to say it's a mayor's appointment if it was...
Although Faulkner Act has not changed that.
If, if Chapter Nineteen was quiet, let me ask you this question. If Chapter Nineteen was quiet as to whose appointment it was, it would defer to the state statute?
Which says it's the mayor's.
Without a competing ordinance saying it's a council appointment. But we have it saying it's the mayor's appointment. So I think there's plenty of overlap here, and I don't know this for sure, but I'm also being told that our town attorney saying the Faulkner Act does not say it is a council appointment.
It does not.
It does not. So I think we beat this one. We, I'm tired of beating this dead horse. I would like to call the question. And again, if, if...
So there's one more.
Oh, there's one more. There's one more. And again, if we keep Chapter Two, it's nothing but paper and a book. We cannot adhere to it. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Next, final one, I have is from Vincent Frant Antoni, 129 Mount Prospect Avenue. He states, "Mayor Melham stated at the last meeting that they were not deleting in its entirely the Department of Planning and Development, but that is exactly what this ordinance reads. He claims he is eliminating this department because there is no Director of Planning. However, Chapter Two, Section Eight states, 'There shall be a Department of Planning and Development under the administrative authority of the township manager. The head of this department shall be a Director of Planning who shall be appointed by the township manager. If there currently is no Director of Planning, the township manager should answer as to why he did not appoint a Director of Planning. You do not eliminate the department. The manager may have a valid reason to not appoint someone or he plans to do so in the future. The Rent Leveling Board and Historic Preservation Committee are already in the Department of Planning and Development, and they have been meeting regularly, so there is no reason to recreate them. Is this just a political move to transfer the power appointments from the council to the mayor? You council members better grow a set and put the brakes on this out of control, Mayor, protect your power."
Slipped that one in on you, didn't it? Slipped that one in on you. I want to see Mary type that in a minute, next week. Okay, so again, I think we covered a lot of these. So it's, it's, I, I'm going to point out the fact that Mr. Frant Antoni is actually advocating for another position in the town. He's advocating for another director that we haven't needed just yet. I wouldn't mind considering one in the future. But in this case, Mr. Frant Antoni is advocating we shouldn't get rid of this department because we don't have the employee. Ninety-nine point nine percent of times, Mr. Frant Antoni is against all new hirings, all new jobs, all new people, saying that we have the amount of infrastructure and employees in place to do such jobs. So I find that to be quite interesting. If I was here proposing one, I can guarantee you Mr. Frant Antoni would not be supporting the manager's ability to hire that person. I can almost guarantee you that.
Mr. Mayor, just so, to make it clear, it's not like you can have somebody that's in house that can be the planning director. That's why you're saying that, because a planning director is a specific title that has specific requirements, and nobody in the township has those requirements. So therefore, you would have to hire somebody.
Right, of course. Another job, right.
So they don't, the retort to that would be, well, hire, you know, hire somebody that we can, because we don't have that person.
Right. So we're, we're shrinking the size of government also. So the Rent Leveling Board Historic Preservation, we've already covered that topic. We're not changing that. In this cleanup, we're just rearranging the numbers a little bit. And again, I will remind Mr. Frant Antoni that Title Forty, colon, fifty-five D, dash, twenty-three, Class Four member, other citizens of the municipality to be appointed by the mayor. That is state statute unless the council manager former government has an ordinance saying that it's a council appointment. We actually have Chapter Nineteen saying it is the mayor's appointment. So I don't think anybody's trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. I also believe Chapter Two has, Mr. Martino, an eleven-member, is it an eleven-member board?
The way it works out, eleven, yes.
Right, so Chapter Two has an...
By state statute, it's not possible.
Right, Chapter Two calls for an eleven-member board when really state statute says that we can have a nine-member board. A lot of reasons why, again, if we keep Chapter Two, it's nothing but a sheet of paper with ink on it. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody else?
Not sure. Number seven.
Can we get a confirmation on that? Boys in the audience?
There's no other ones.
No other ones, okay.
Motion to close public hearing. Move for final adoption.
Second.
We have a motion to close and move for final adoption. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance number eight for public hearing and ordinance amending...
Just pay, I'm going to need you for this one, maybe.
An ordinance amending the revised general ordinances of the township of Belville, Section two point two eight.
Vote now for public.
Second.
Second.
Motion made, and second, to open public commenting. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
No.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Verse one I have is from Mario Drawz, and he asks, "Please read out the changes and cleanup of this ordinance. Is this to give the mayor and council members health benefits? If yes, what is the cost per person?"
So I'm looking here, is that right? The specific changes, Steve, I don't know if you want to talk about the specific changes?
The, the specific change is that it gives mayor and council...
Well...
Medical benefits. It doesn't really change anything.
It supports the current practice.
It supports, it doesn't, it, it supports the current practice. It changes the prior ordinance which previously said that, back in two thousand and ten, it was an ordinance that, that it took benefits away from the council newly elected or actually newly sworn in council members. So in two thousand and ten, an ordinance was passed that said newly sworn in council members, any, any council member sworn in after that date would not get medical benefits.
So let me just, I want, I think we're going to have some other questions on this, and I know that some people are curious about this. I was on the council twenty years ago, we got health benefits. So to answer the first part of the question, this, this ordinance is not to give the mayor and council members health benefits. Mayor and council have had health benefits, have currently health benefits if they choose to take them. This is just to clean up some inconsistencies. Mayor Kimball and Councilman Kennedy had health benefits. Okay? I don't know if the public realizes that. We are not voting to give ourselves something that we did not have yesterday or six months ago, or add any more money to what the health hair, healthcare cost budget are. You can make the argument that I have now taken Mayor Kimball's benefits since I'm in this seat, Councilman Depena has now taken Councilman Kennedy's benefits. They had health benefits while they sat here. We are not voting to create health benefits for ourselves. It has been a practice to give health benefits. I had health benefits twenty years ago. Then the council, in two thousand and sixteen, voted to make a change to that. Sixteen?
No.
No, the first, I'm sorry, the first change would have been...
Two thousand and ten.
Two thousand and ten. So I had benefits twenty years ago. In two thousand and ten, the council voted to make a change to the ordinance. That ordinance change should have precluded, if it was adhered to correctly, or I should say interpreted correctly, should have precluded every single council member, and some of which are still here in this governing body, receiving benefits, that should have stopped after their next swearing in. They would have been sworn in not once, but two more times, at least since then, and had always received the benefits. I also have, in two thousand and sixteen, a unanimous resolution by the governing body, and I am not pointing blames at all, at, here on anybody, but I think it's important to note that several council members that are still here voted for that, and certain council members that are no longer here voted for that. That was unanimous by Councilman Cazarelli, Councilman Kennedy, Councilman Longo, Mayor Kimball, Councilman Nattari, Councilman Revel, and Councilwoman Strumelberg. They voted unanimously in two thousand and sixteen by resolution that it was the policy of the council to now put the benefits back after reconsideration. The township manager would then have the ability to, to act on that. Unfortunately, unfortunately, the council was probably ill-advised at that time. I have every suspicion as to why they were probably ill-advised at the time. But if they had, you, Mr. Town Attorney, were by their side at that time, they probably would have done it correctly and done it by ordinance, because you know and I know, you really can't change an ordinance by resolution. But I believe this was probably interpreted, and you can interpret it, this was the will of the entire council to unanimously vote in two thousand and sixteen, before I was even here, that this would be an ongoing practice. And managers, current, past, and prior, have all seen it that way. So again, which is why I've called this a cleanup ordinance, because we clearly have the will of the council in two thousand and sixteen to correct something that they voted on to change earlier than that. Unfortunately, they didn't change it correctly. Council members have always received benefits. Council members have still continued to receive benefits. We are not adding any more cost to the budget, to anything at all because of this action today. Please question where you get your news from, if you believe that. Mayor Kimball and Councilman Kennedy both had benefits, and you could argue that the new members have taken their benefits. That's my explanation. It'll probably serve to be an explanation for future comments and questions.
Next, Victor Mafucci from Continental Avenue. He asks, "If approved, exactly who will be eligible for coverage? Does that include doctors, hospitals, dental, vision, medicines, anything else? What is the approximate taxpayer cost for single coverage, family coverage? If an eligible person opts out today, still receives stipend? If so, how much? And permit, fine permits coverage for part-time professionals? Do we have any? If so, how many?"
We, I mean, I'm going to start at the bottom. We currently, just in case people are shocked, we currently have part-time people that are getting benefits. We do. We do. This is not changing that at all. Those people have gotten benefits. There are part-time people that are getting benefits. I don't consider the council part-time. We receive the lowest pay out of every single municipal employee, but I know for a fact how much time, effort, energy I put in. It could be forty, fifty, sixty hours a week. So it's got nothing to do with part-time.
We still have a part-time profession. I don't believe we have part-time professionals anymore since the Governor Chris changed the law. I don't think we have any part-time professionals.
What's your definition of professional?
Professionals are like our prosecutor...
Tax assessor? I'm just asking.
The judge?
The judge? No, I'm not picking one person. We have a judge. Ours would be considered part-time.
I think the judge may receive benefits.
The judge does get benefits.
But I don't think, it used to be the prosecutors, the public defenders, none of them get benefits.
I know, but you, you can't be half-pregnant here, either. Councilor, guys, you have a line. The judge does get benefits, our tax assessor does get benefits, and they are considered part-time. I do not consider municipal council part-time. And they make a hell of a lot more money than we do. So you can't go by salary, and you can't go by time put in, because I know how much time I put in, I know how much time my council colleagues put in, and you can't go by that, you can't go by the salary. You go by what the ordinance says, go by what the original intent of the ordinance was. You know there was an amendment, you know there was a resolution contraventing that. Unfortunately, it was done incorrectly. Because it was done incorrectly, we are now cleaning it up. We are not adding one nickel to the budget. As far as cost goes, it's a very complicated formula. We are self-insured. We do not necessarily have a straight end premium. We are self-insured, which means that you take all of our bills at the end of the year, divide them by how many members we have, and that's the cost. I am somebody who uses very limited healthcare. The administrative cost on my policy for a single coverage could be thirty-five hundred dollars. It is not the numbers you think it is because I don't use that. So it really does matter what kind of coverage you have and everything else. I'm not quite sure about the stipend portion. Mr. Manager, I don't know if there's been a policy on that, or if there's a policy in place for current employees.
The stipend is five thousand dollars at the end of the year for any employee that declines benefits.
And not every single person?
That also, that could be less to him, Mr. Manager, depending on your salary.
Salary, yeah.
Okay, I like that.
The maximum is that.
The maximum is that, depending on, on salary.
It could be less depending on...
It's prorated.
It is prorated based on salary. We are the lowest paid salaried people in this place, and that's that. Opted out, receive a stipend, how much, permit part-time professionals? I think we got most of those questions.
Yep.
Anything else?
Next one is Vincent Frant Antoni, 129 Mount Prospect Avenue. He states this ordinance should be defeated. The township attorney is correct stating that the original ordinance providing health benefits for council members was illegally changed. The formal coun, the former council, which there are four present members still serving, illegally tried to eliminate the health benefit ordinance by a resolution slipped in at the end of our reorganization meeting. It was not on the offensive agenda. At that time, those in the know knew it was intended to give health benefits to third ward councilmen. Mr. Martino is correct, you cannot amend the ordinance by a right resolution period. I ask, did you all run for office to serve the public or to serve yourselves? In this present pandemic crisis, there are double taxpayers who lost their jobs and cannot afford health insurance for their own families. They should not be forced to pay yours. I thank Burke and Nattari for loading no one in production. We need two more with the guts to say no.
Well, Mr. Frant Antoni and others love to use the word illegal, and I think, I admit it, I think our attorney admitted the fact that you cannot change a ordinance by resolution. I believe that we've also said that it was clearly the intent of the council to make that the policy. I also believe this is the very reason why we are cleaning this up. It, it, you know, you, you need to have the ordinance in place. We know the ordinance was incorrect and against prior council policy. Therefore, we're actually doing just that. We are cleaning it up, amending the ordinance to make it, to make it right. I, again, Mr. Frant Antoni does not mention previous members of the council that received benefits. Mr. Frant Antoni does not discuss how when the ordinance was changed in two thousand and ten or sixteen? Ten? Right, in two thousand and ten, there was a cutoff date that was never adhered to either. Again, I also believe that the council then amended and created their policy and wanted the policy to be done. Unfortunately, they did not have Mr. Martino by their side. They had another attorney but by their side, who did not realize that that was done incorrectly. I thank Mr. Martino for advising this governing body, and this governing body wishing to clean up multiple ordinances, which is not, this is not the first. We're going to have other stuff coming, including the restriction on cow stables and horse crossings. Those are two that I have just found, Mr. Martino, that I want to... That I want to change. I think we covered those. Anything else?
Yes, the next one is from Ruben Rodriguez from 179 Cedar Hill Avenue. He states, "My name is Ruben Rodriguez. I have been a homeowner in town for ten years. I have two daughters, two daughters in our schools that I volunteer at and also coach the Belville Recreation. that I volunteer at and also coach for Bellevue Recreation. I believe I may have coached some of your children. Recently, my wife and I were furloughed, and we are currently at risk of losing our health insurance. I know many in our town are in the same boat. Many of us have yet to receive any unemployment or their stimulus check. I write to you to ask you to not pass the health care for council ordinance at this time. I understand that this council puts in more than the average hours that is considered part-time, but please be aware of the optics of the situation. Using residents' money to pay for the council health insurance while the same residents would not pay their premiums does not seem fair. I ask you to, at the very least, settle the conversation until our economy begins to rebound."
So I just want to, first of all, thank Mr. Rodriguez for his comment. It's not a name I recognize, and it's good. I'm glad that he's here. I'm glad he's participating in the debate. And again, I'm sure if he's watching now or listening now, he already heard some of my explanations. This is nothing new. If this is not new, councils before us have received health benefits. Mayor Kimball received health benefits. Councilman Kennedy received health benefits. They are no longer here. We are here now. We are not doing anything new. We are not adding any additional money to the budget. We are not changing how much money goes into the budget to cover health care. Same cost it was last year. It's gonna be same cost it's gonna be this year, as far as how many people are on it and what the rates are, what the premiums are. That said, I also noticed that Ruben mentioned the fact that they might be furloughed and are trying to deal with unemployment. I would love to let Mr. Rodriguez know. Many people in your situation in Bellevue are in the same situation with unemployment insurance. Very difficult to get them on the phone. If you want to email me, Mr. Rodriguez, I have a contact in Senator Ruiz's office. They have been able to actually reach out to unemployment on behalf of many of our residents. So if you are having an issue and you still cannot get a hold of unemployment, please do send me an email. I would gladly forward that to our senate office. But again, no additional costs. And again, I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you're participating in the conversation.
Next one is from Lisa Stefano and Diamond and Angelica Stefano. They say, "They're sending this email because they oppose the health benefits ordinance from passing. It's not in the best interest of the taxpayers. They all work less than part-time hours, so should not be entitled to health benefits."
Again, I'll say the same thing. Thank you, Ms. Stefano and Diamond. Haven't seen the name here in these meetings. And again, and I'm not gonna repeat myself too many times, but in case you didn't, you're just tuning in late, no new cost. Previous councils have gotten benefits. Previous mayors have gotten benefits. We're not starting a brand-new policy today. We are cleaning up an ordinance that seems to be, wasn't adhered to or wasn't introduced and voted on correctly, yet the will of the council was known by unanimous vote when they did try to change it back, albeit done incorrectly, which is why I've consistently said this is a cleanup ordinance. We have benefits. We're not starting our benefits tomorrow. No new cost to the budget. Same people that had benefits last year will be the same people that have benefits this year. Nothing new here. And I will say that we do not work less than part-time. I probably put in 40, 50, 60 hours a week here. And we are obviously among the lowest-paid employees and probably among the lowest-paid public servants with what our salaries currently are. Nobody's complaining about that. We're just saying that this has been a practice that's been ongoing. We didn't start this process. We didn't start this practice. We just got plugged into the system. We're here just trying to correct it. Anybody else?
Yes, the next one is from Mary Cruznick, 75, Mount Lakes. She states, "The double township's governing body has taken an oath to offer us to accept the due share responsibility for the residents of our town, and by voting to adopt this ordinance, which allows certain members of the governing body to enroll in health benefits, is unacceptable. The office of Mayor Andrew Council is a limited part-time position and in no way requires more than a handful of hours to perform. Local residents are hardworking people and should not be asked to put the bill for elected officials to reap these benefits. If the ordinance is cleanup, as you are quoted, Mayor, the public ordinance has written cleanup letter which that means specific intent and clarity for the taxpayers. I encourage the double council to vote no on adoption."
So I think I've already explained what portion of the cleanup is. Again, Ms. Cruznick, you are incorrect in your assertion that passing this will allow certain members of the governing body to enroll in health benefits. We are already enrolled, as previous mayors and as previous council members were. We are enrolled. We were enrolled last year. We're enrolled this year. We're not adding anything new to the budget. We are not creating a new policy. We're not starting something brand-new as of tomorrow. We have been enrolled. I think Ms. Cruznick would probably know that her experience in local government would dictate that most elected officials are not limited part-time positions. I am certainly not limited. I am certainly not part-time. I put 40, 50, 60 hours a week in. I know my council colleagues put a lot of hours in themselves, having nothing to do with that, because this is part of what we took an oath to do. But we are not part-time. We are not adopting this to enroll in benefits. And as far as the cleanup goes, I think we've already made it clear, there was, 20 years ago, I had benefits. In 2010? Correct me if I'm wrong, the years again, people? In 2010, the council voted to remove. In 2016, the council voted to make it the policy to council, albeit incorrectly by resolution, that they did vote unanimously. Therefore, this is a cleanup. We are taking the prior will of the council from 2016. Those who did receive benefits and those who continued to receive benefits in 2016, and we are then cleaning up what their intention was, because they incorrectly did it, were incorrectly advised, and we are cleaning it up now by amending the ordinance. Anybody else?
Yes, one more from Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. "In regard to this ordinance, which deletes Section 2, there's 28.4 of the Township's Administrative Code, which since June 30th of 2010 has prevented by ordinance any subsequently-elected council members from receiving township-provided health and medical insurance benefits. I want to go on record once again in stating that I voted this action. While Mr. Melham may claim that the resolution of June 30th of 2016 effectively rescinds this previous ordinance..."
Did not say that.
"...and you are simply cleaning up another obsolete part of the Administrative Code, it is a basic aspect of law that ordinances cannot be modified by resolution. And during the last council meeting, Mr. Martino even acknowledged this much on the record, adding that, had he been the township attorney in 2016, this matter would have been handled the correct way."
The very way we're handling it today.
"Is it Mr. Martino in essence saying that the June 30th, 2016 resolution is invalid? And does this necessarily imply that as many as four council members have been properly, if not illegally, receiving taxpayer-funded medical insurance all along? By the way, that resolution of June 30th, 2016, was slipped in at the last moment to the morning's reorg agenda with virtually nondescript reference, and was the result of quid pro quo between three council members at the time, a matter that Mr. Atari explained to me in noisy detail the same afternoon. If we were allowed in the chamber tonight, I would appeal to Mr. Atari to tell the public what he told me that afternoon. But I imagine he'd set his all-time record for slipping out the back door once again in the effort to avoid responding. Without a properly introduced and approved ordinance rescinding what had been in place since June 30th, 2010, then this ten-year ordinance remains legally binding one. If it is true that these other four council members have been receiving this insurance benefit all along, which would be in direct contravention of existing ordinance, then they should be compelled to refund those taxpayers the equivalent of this benefit, which could collectively total upwards of $300,000 based upon the already stated insurance cost numbers. Board of Education trustees properly receive no financial benefits for their service to our community, and neither should any council member."
So, again, I've already answered most of these questions. Mr. Sheldon is, once again, as usual, incorrect when he tries to take my words and make them say something I did not say. I never claimed that a resolution in June 30th, 2016, effectively rescinds a previous ordinance. As a matter of fact, I have repeatedly said that you cannot amend an ordinance by resolution, something our town attorney has also agreed with. I do not believe any council members have gotten anything illegally. That would be an act of the township manager. And we've had many township managers since this thing was rescinded, voted on by resolution, put back. Many, many different township managers have been there. It is their job to enact and set everything up with regard to new employees coming on or benefits and such. This 10-year ordinance remains the legally binding one, which is exactly the reason why we were voting to amend it today. So, anything else?
That's all I have for that ordinance?
Are we sure? I don't, I do not want to revisit this?
There's no other reasons.
No other ones? No other ones?
Based on what Kelly gave us.
Based on what Kelly gave you. Okay. So at this point, I'm gonna ask for a motion to close public commenting and move for final adoption.
Motion?
We have a motion made and a second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
De Penya?
Yes.
Resiano?
Yes.
Nattari?
No.
Ravel? Ravel?
Yes, Kelly.
Stromlou Burke?
No.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. I think we should have a conversation at the next council meeting that potentially, if you're a councilperson receiving benefits and you vote no on the ordinance to do that, while you can't be forced to relinquish your benefits, you should at least be formally asked to do so. You should not get the benefit of voting no on an ordinance such as this and then getting the benefits that you just voted no against.
Excuse me, I can't understand what you're saying.
Councilman, what I'm saying is that we should probably put on discussion the next meeting and do a resolution asking any council member who didn't necessarily support this, that is receiving benefits, to voluntarily relinquish them, because you should not get the benefit of something you just voted against.
I, okay, Mr. Mayor, I had an option to bring health benefits from the town. They did give to me the eye glass and the other one. That was the only one, and I never even received that. So let's not go there now.
Okay, so you're gonna relinquish your eyeglass and your...
Dental.
Dental?
I received health benefits of the company of S...
Yeah, but the prescription and the eyeglass is all included in our package.
You could look into the records. I have never, in five, six, seven years, been banned a job. Eyeglass, neck, four.
All right, so then just opt out. That's, I mean, that's the best way to do it. Okay. Well, we should ask to opt out. You shouldn't vote no on something and then get the benefit of it. Ordinance number nine.
Ordinance number nine for public hearing and ordinance amendment revised under ordinances in the township's title, Section 23-18.21A3.
Motion open, public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and second, open public hearing. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
De Penya?
Yes.
Resiano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
And Ravel?
Yes.
Stromlou Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
I'm double-checking. No, I do not have any public comments for ordinance number nine.
This is a swing pool ordinance zoning change. It's a weird little strange loophole. If you live on a corner property, because of setbacks, you can't have a swing pool. We're just...
You have to go to zoning board.
We have to go, there's a zoning board for, we're just cleaning that up. Another cleanup. Councilman Cazarelli?
Motion closed and...
Did we open? Did we actually open?
Yeah, we did.
We did open. So we need a motion to close, move for final adoption.
He...
Second.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
De Penya?
Yes.
Resiano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Stromlou Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance approved.
We're getting there, everybody. Public comments. Do we have to reread the...
Motion open, public?
Second.
Motion made and second, open public comment. The clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
De Penya?
Yes.
Resiano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Stromlou Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. So, same exact disclaimer, same thing. And anybody that wanted to submit a comment had the right to do so.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, did you receive any public comments for today's meeting?
Yes, I did. The first one I have is from Mario Tralas, 95 Bell Street.
I'm gonna pause for one second. I'll ask the deputy mayor to take the chair. I have to go and make sure we're gonna stay live. I think the air card is dying.
You're up.
Last meeting, Mayor, you made reference to full-time managers. I agree you need full-time personnel in that position.
This is directed to me. Let me just wait.
But I remember during your term as council from 2000 to 2004, you hired a part-time manager, Tom Banker. Correct me if I'm wrong.
You're wrong.
How much was he paid for this part-time position? I viewed the video of the rally that was held on Saturday, June 6th, at Town Hall. I did not see you there. Any reason you did not attend on behalf of the township? It was a perfect photo op for you.
So Tom Banker was not hired as a part-time person. Tom Banker was hired as an independent contractor. I do not have the salary at the time, but he was hired initially as an independent contractor. After about a year or so, I believe, he was then hired. I'm not quite sure what his requirement was to be in-house here. I believe it was either 17 or 20 hours a week to be in-house here. But then he did work at his home office, and I don't believe was considered a part-time employee. Did not get any benefits, did not get pension, did not get any of that, but he did make his contributions after his consulting, independent contractor status expired, and we made him a full-time, or I should say, we made him an employee. That's the... But since then, he was probably one of the few outside managers. And I guess now I'm two-for-two, that I've hired two outside managers, which is totally against the norm here in Bellevue, and something I always recommend is an outside, third-party professional. The rally, I find it interesting that Mr. Droz mentions the rally. I know certain council people that Mr. Droz is friendly with and worked on their campaigns also didn't attend. I'm not quite sure if there's an additional question in there about them? No? No? Okay. No additional questions there about them. I did, was a part of the planning of the rally. I was here as part of my part-time hours. While I was here, I sat with the police department. I spoke with the organizers. I sat with the police department. I spoke with the organizers. I explained to the organizers that I would not be attending. I explained exactly why I'll be attending. I'm not going to get into it now. In part, it was personal. In part, I was not in the state the day before and was not planning on being here. We did not receive a, a formal invitation till I was already outside of the state, and I am actually reaching out and in constant communication with a few of the young people, probably five or six of them at this point, that have communicated with me and asked me some questions, and we have a date set up. I believe it's next Thursday that we're all gonna sit down and talk and have a conversation. Um, I don't know if Mr. Dros was here. Uh, I find it interesting that he's always against any kind of publicity that this township gets in a good way, because I somehow end up in, in photos, but now he's looking for me to end up in photos. Quite contradictory as usual. Next.
Next is from a Belleville citizen with, uh, from Mitchell Street. It says, hello, I'm writing to comment on calm down with Bellevle Councilwoman Burke. I do not believe she should serve the community after using racist, racist language. I am a resident of Mitchell Street in Belleville.
Okay, next.
Next, next one is from Masik Cali. Uh, my name is Masik Cali Moran, residing at fifty Oak Street in Belleville. My concern, like many others in our town, is the presence of Marie Strumlow Burke in a position of power. She has shown obvious disregard for citizens of Belleville with their demeaning stiness on racial groups. I demand her resignation. Furthermore, Mayor Malham's failure to respond to national racial issues and Twitter conflict has made people feel unimportant and unaccounted for. We would appreciate an open discourse on the matters of police reform and systematic racism. Change starts small. We cannot wait for a national decision to.
I would just recommend or refer you to the township website. We, this council and this governing body did draft and sign a unanimous letter, so we did address the national concerns last week. Took us about three or four days to draft that letter. It was published and live on our website and social media on Friday, and also, I believe, and I hope you were paying attention to the earlier portion of this meeting where Councilwoman DePena put on the agenda something that we were gonna be discussing. We had a long conversation already here today. Our police chief was here. Uh, he had some statistics and he had some explanations for us, and we've all collectively agreed that we are gonna continue that conversation. You're up, Kel. Which one was that, Kel?
That one.
Masik Cali.
Masik Cali Moran?
Got it, got it.
Okay, next one is for Jonathan Toledo. There is no address. My name is Jonathan Toledo. I'm a Belleville resident of Mary Street. I am calling for the immediate resignation of First Ward Councilwoman Marie Strumlow Burke. Her words, this is going to be a blank, blank town for vile and disgusting. I find it repulsive that all of our tax dollars have been used to pay a woman's salary who possesses this much virtual ignorance for over, for over two thousand days since this call came to light. I've dealt with racial discrimination from a number of our public school staff as well as members of our law enforcement. I guess I should not be surprised to see it alive alone in our local government. Next one is from Elias Tapia, Tapia, I'm sorry. My name is Elias Tapia. I'm a Belleville resident on Berkeley Avenue. I'm calling for the resignation of First Ward Councilmember Marie Burke for her racist comments referring to our town as a blank, blank town. Words like that should never be accepted by anyone, let alone a councilwoman. I don't want someone that views our town that way to be a representative of, of our people. Next one is from Ernestine Guzman. My name is Ernestine, and I'm a resident of Naples, Naples Avenue. I'm calling for the resignation of First Ward Councilmember Marie Burke. Her words, this is going to be a blank, blank town. Next one is from Emily Ramos, and she lives on Frederick Street. She says, I was so happy to see the peaceful protests that occurred this weekend in my hometown. It was a wonderful display of our town's diversity and our fight for justice for the world. We demand for the resignation of Marie Burke, First Ward Councilwoman, who said of Belleville, this is going to be a blank, blank town. We do not need that kind of leadership within our council. The people of Belleville will not stand for it. Belleville's diversity is what makes the town so special, one that I love. Please listen to your town when we ask for her resignation. We will continue to fight for this. We do not tolerate racism in this town, and Marie Burke has got to go. Next one is from Destiny Free. I'm a resident of Belleville who lives right off Union Avenue, and I'm emailing you in regard to the town meeting that is going to be held today. Excuse me. I am strongly urging for the resignation of the First Ward Councilwoman Marie Strumlow Burke. After videos surfaced of a voicemail in which Burke stated Belleville was going to become a blank, blank town, this is not the kind of person I want representing my town. These are not the kind of people who deserve to hold any amount of power in the American system. This is a matter of basic human rights, and Burke must be held accountable no matter how long ago this voice now was recorded. Next one is from Andrea Romero.
Hold, hold, hold on something, Kel. Um, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to acknowledge, you already did, acknowledge that we have another comment from this young lady?
Yes.
And that's it.
And that's it?
That's it. That's okay, Steve?
Yeah, she asked it not to be read aloud for privacy reasons, so.
She asked it not to be read aloud.
We can acknowledge that the, the council read it, but she does not want it read for privacy reasons, so.
Understood, so.
We have that. Council members, mayor, council can acknowledge they've read it, but she does not want it read to the public.
Yeah, perfect. The next comment I have is from Tiffany Caesar. She says, good day. My name is Tiffany, and I'm calling for the immediate resignation of the First Ward Councilwoman Marie Burke. I am a current Belleville resident whose friends and families live in a ward in Core Black. It is a disgrace to hear the recording of her saying that this town is going, is going to be, and I quote, "This is going to be a blank, blank town." This is not the type of person that should be in charge of such a diverse town. She does not exemplify what it means to be a councilperson for this town and its residents. You need to do what is right and get her out sooner rather than later. Racism has no place in politics, and she needs to be set as an example of what is not tolerated in our town.
I'm just gonna say one comment to that. A lot of these comments seem to be along the same theme, and I'm letting the clerk read them as the comments come in. Uh, we might say something afterward, but as far as this specific comment, there is a lot of people out there that do believe this governing body can remove one of our colleagues or can, uh, suspend or force a resignation or something. We cannot do that. Uh, these comments are six years old, before I was even mayor, and the governing body at that time did pass a resolution of censure and ask for the resignation, but nothing can be done beyond that by this governing body.
Give me one moment.
We're at Sylvie.
Sylvie Gobera. I am writing with regard to the voicemail in which Marie Burke, First Ward Councilwoman, can be heard making a racist remark when referring to prospective Belleville residents. I understand you have received several complaints regarding this matter. However, I feel compelled to address this incident since it seems there is no action taken or consequence. As a Belleville resident for the past thirty-four years, in a POC, I have seen firsthand how far the Belleville community has come, especially when it comes to race relations. I am pleased to see all the new changes taking place under our new leadership and seeing how we can continue to improve as a community. However, I am disappointed to see the misrecognition of Belleville by Marie Burke. She does not represent what we stand for, as she, as such, she should resign. I believe that this situation has been an eye-opening occurrence for many in our community on the importance of voting.
To Sylvia, I will say the same thing. Uh, you know, you say, and I'm glad, I'm glad to see all this participation, names I've never recognized before, glad to see them here, but again, this governing body, uh, when, when you say that we, we've taken no action or consequence, uh, we, we have no action or no consequence can we take. Uh, I like the way you ended it by showing the importance of voting. I will say that even though this is a six-year-old topic, there have been multiple elections since then, and, uh, people need to take part in democracy and vote, and I'm glad she's appealing to that.
Next one is from Carmen Meteau, fourteen Brook Street. To the mayor and councilmembers, our tax dollars being used, are our tax dollars being used to supply Mrs. Burke with security in a police car parked in front of her home since Saturday? Two, who made that decision, and will the entire township have a police car parked on every street going forward?
It's a direct question. Chief, do you wanna jump in on that or no? Are tax dollars being used to put security, a police car in front of Marie Burke's home?
There, uh, there is a police car in front of Marie Burke's home.
There's not a police officer stationed there.
How much is costing?
Right, we're not incurring, I mean, I will say that the, the Belleville Police Department will, will protect.
I'm not telling you why that car is there.
Right.
It could be for speeders.
Belleville Police Department protects all residents.
I mean, it's a, it's a some, uh, presumptuous to assume why it's there.
Okay.
Okay.
But I assume that you, you're the police chief. Decision was made by the police chief. Okay. Anything else?
Next one is Joelle Diemoran. I call for an demand of resignation of Marie Strumlow Burke, Councilwoman, due to the racist, disturbing comments captured on audio in two thousand fourteen. This systematic ingrained and institutionalized racism, especially in housing, is one of the underlying reasons people are marching in the streets, and in this time, leadership started to respond in meaningful and deliberate way. Step one is Mrs. Burke's resignation.
The next one, Kel, is.
And then Lex Doyle.
Yeah, so, uh, I, I know we had a whole bunch in a row on the same theme.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, before we go on, I see some of the other ones are taking a little different turn.
Yes.
Uh, we don't normally do this, but again, for, I, there, there very well may be a lot of people that are watching this, and the role of the public commenting section is to allow public the right to speak. Uh, it's commenting, it's not necessarily question and answer, but because I see so many comments along the same theme, uh, before we go on to other types of comments that are taking a different course of action, uh, I just, if Ms. Councilwoman Burke is under no obligation to have to respond, but if she does wanna respond, I do wanna give her a, a brief moment to do so. I don't know if she heard me. Can you just?
Councilwoman? Who's talking?
The mayor is speaking.
The mayor is speaking all this, just now?
Yeah, Marie, that, that was me. I was just curi, we're going on to some other comments. I'm just curious if, if you wanna make a statement or say anything.
No, I don't.
Okay, no problem. That was your right. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Next one is from Lex Doyle. He says, what policies are being proposed to prevent the harm or murder of, of an innocent person of color that stands as criminal cops? What reform measures can be taken in terms of redirecting funding from militarization of police in other areas towards community resources such as mental health help and educational career opportunities, especially for people at a socioeconomic disadvantage?
So, thank you, Lex, for contributing to the conversation today. Uh, I hope you saw the beginning of the meeting where Councilwoman DePena put the topic on, uh, about some different policies and how we wanna go forward and communicate that to our residents. Um, not only our township employees, but our police department, our fire department, all undergo a lot of training, including sensitivity training, and we have acknowledged that we will do a better job of communicating that type of training to our residents. Uh, and if you heard the beginning of this conversation, uh, we also have the chief here with us, and he has agreed to engage us in a dialogue or a conversation that maybe we'll livestream. It might be something along the lines of a conversation with the chief, and, uh, we could be asking a lot more in-depth questions, just like the ones that you proposed.
Next one is from Concerned Citizen. I'm a resident of Ralph Street. There has been construction on my block behind a state care for several weeks. They built an entry-exit door, cut down trees behind the building, which exposes graffiti on the backside.
Tommy.
This eyesore is right across from my house. We're wondering if you can confirm what will occupy this space and ensure the newly exposed backside will be freshly painted over to cover the graffiti. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. So, uh, I'm gonna ask the manager to make a note on this one. Uh, sh, I believe it's gonna be pre-K or daycare going there, uh, with, uh, a contract from our school district, so it's not necessarily a private enterprise going there. Uh, but Mr. Ayakono, uh, this person is talking about graffiti now being exposed on maybe the Ralph Street section. Councilman Graziano has, uh, made comments about graffiti exposed on the east side that you can see from Route twenty-one.
Right underneath the sun.
Underneath the billboard. If you can, uh, talk to our property owner there and have both those issues addressed. Thank you for your comment, Ms. Ford.
Eight years ago, eight, nine years ago.
Okay, can you please go forward?
The next one I have is from Victor Mafucci.
Six, actually.
Continental Avenue. One, last Wednesday in my area, Continental Avenue, Celia Terrace, did not have recycling picked up. It was still there at midnight when I put out my garbage for Thursday pickup. Of course, early Thursday morning, everything was gone. I doubt they sent out two trucks. I don't know what fees are charged to the town, but I would think they would be different. If so, did we get screwed again?
So, I just, I, I, we, we pay a tonnage fee. Whatever they pick up, we, we pay a tipping fee for, and that's that. I'm glad they did come back, and we do have recycling and garbage collection issues here in Belleville.
Number two, I know that non-essential construction was stopped due to COVID-19. I don't understand why buildings consisted on Franklin Avenue Apartments and the Belhun Avenue Apartments, but was halted on the Soho Apartments. What is the difference, both apartment buildings with A store or stores?
Non-essential construction was stopped for a small period of time, uh, but has been reopened up now for weeks. So, I'm not quite sure the date's in question there, uh, but non-essential initially was stopped, and then, uh, it was reopened up at least three or four weeks ago. I know that because I was able to resume construction on my own property. Uh, Soho was allowed to continue because they had a security or health issue. They had to get the sprinklers installed, which are only half-installed, and in case there was a fire in the building, they needed the sprinklers to go off. So, I'm not quite sure why that one stopped when they actually had permission to work even while it was a not, not essential stop.
Number three, Silver Lake Residential Zone. There is a case before the planning board that only requires a simple subdivision because it meets all specifications for that zone, no variances required. That in itself is the problem. When the new specs come before the planning board for review in this council to approve the ordinance, a number of us voiced our objection to the required parking element. The proposal is to build two two-family homes with three bedrooms in each unit. The zoning requirement is for one-half parking space per dwelling unit. In other words.
That's right. Steve?
Twelve bedrooms only require two off-street parking spaces. Also consider that the new curb cuts will take away existing street parking.
And you know, I don't think that's the Silver Lake Zone.
This opens the floodgates with further cases. I sincerely urge this council to propose a change to the parking requirements in Silver Lake Zone ASAP.
No, he's just talking about the, I don't know if you know it offhand. Uh, well, first of all, simple subdivision, uh, is allowed no matter what. If it's a, if it's a fifty by, if it's a fifty by a hundred-foot zone, and you have a hundred feet, this simple subdivision is still gonna be permitted no matter what. So, the fact that it's now smaller and two smaller lots, um, it's basically the same thing. Uh, I'm not quite sure. I thought the parking in Silver Lake was per, per bedroom. I thought we changed it for that. So, I'm not sure if I'm incorrect or Mr. Mafucci's incorrect, but I thought it was for every bedroom, you needed at least one parking spot. I could be wrong. Uh, if I am wrong, I will stand corrected by somebody shortly. Uh, maybe not today, but we will definitely get Mr. Viz. We'll get an, I mean, we'll get an answer. I gotta, I don't obviously know the ordinance.
Mr. Mafucci, we will get you, if you're still with us tonight, we will get you an answer on that one. I thought it was per, per bedroom. So, two-bedroom apart, two-bedroom house needs two parking spots.
Correct. Right, we, we actually changed that then. Yeah.
So, we'll, we'll get you an answer on that. Anybody else?
Dariana Botista. Good afternoon. My name is Darianny, Dariana Botista. I'm a junior Belleville high school, and I'm also part of Belleville Allies and am one of the organizers responsible for Saturday's protest. I have a question for tonight's meeting. I'd like to know what actions will the town, Belleville, and Board of Education be putting forth in response to the racism and discrimination issues happening in the high schools? Two weeks ago, there was an incident where a few high school students began posting racial slurs and racist and discriminatory comments on social media, which caused an uproar of anger within the stu, the town's students.
She actually, she actually.
This is not the first time this has happened with our school. It has been going on for quite some time now. This is a pressing issue that could affect the conflict negotiations. Thank you for the time. And she added on.
So, no, I think that's somebody else.
Same person, same person.
She sent one running to the other.
So, let's.
It's all the same.
All right.
Question. Hello again. I also have some other questions to add on the questions that I asked you in my pre-DC now. I'd like to ask, what is the school doing to educate students? Are they offering educational discourses on being racially aware and sensitive? Why do racial slurs not apply under their zero, zero tolerance policy for bullying? If they do, why haven't they been suspended?
So, Dariani, first of all, I thank you for participating in the discussion. Uh, chief, this is the young lady who was on our conference call?
Yes, that's correct.
One of the organizers. So, thank you for, one, being involved in our community. Thank you for taking the time to write this question. I hope you're still with us today. Uh, I would love to give you answers as I try and answer everybody that addresses us and comes before us. Uh, however, in this case, I have to refer you to the Board of Education. I absolutely have no idea how their policies go, what their guidelines are. I know for a fact there are certain Board of Education trustees probably listening right now. Um, I'm not quite sure when their next meeting is, but I can assure you that if you submit the same exact questions to them for their next to them for their next Board of Education meeting, you will get some answers. Again, I would love to be able to answer you, I thank you for taking the time and being involved.
As a township, this is something that we do not support, we take it very seriously,
I know our police department even gets involved sometimes on student issues, which sometimes are school-related and sometimes they borderline criminal act, and our township police department has been out there, has intervened, has investigated, I'm very familiar with one or two of the cases as a matter of fact. I would love to answer you more thoroughly, unfortunately, I just can't speak to school district policies, I would definitely recommend you stay involved and please take these same exact questions and submit them to the Board of Education for the next meeting, I'm certain that you'll get some answers.
Next is Michael Sheldon, 47 Lloyd Street. One, once again, I ask when the township's 2020 budget will be introduced. Mr. Iacono's comment from the last council meeting that we will not introduce the budget until we know what revenues we can count on, adding that he is hoping for up to four allocations of funding to be awarded, including money from the HEROES Act, is an essential dodge. Bluefield introduced its budget on May 4th and not only on May 5th, with most other Essex County communities doing the same a month ago. In fact, several Essex County towns have already adopted their 2020 budgets. But despite all the promises from Team Melham, these last two years that the days of the late budget introduction were over, here we go once again. If you are waiting for Hail Mary help from Washington to offset revenue shortfalls, then why can every other community in the same predicament facing the same challenges still manage to do their budgets on time?
They have.
The absence of an introduced budget helps fuel speculation and rumors that the township is deeply in debt and may need a very significant municipal tax increase. But you are waiting for a last-minute miracle bailout to avoid the inevitable. Any comments as to when we will finally see the introduced budget?
I'm going to let Mr. Iacono quickly handle that one, so we can just go in order.
Yeah, so we continue to work on the budget with the finance team, we have, in constant contact with our auditor Joe Ficom, our finance officer and the entire finance team. It is a challenge, there's nothing to, but it's no secret, Belleville, like many other towns in New Jersey, are dealing with something that we've never dealt with before, this is a crisis and it has an economic impact on our budget, and again, I think it would be unfair to the residents to adopt a budget when we specifically will or should hopefully get some relief, and why wouldn't we want to pass that relief on to the residents? So, yeah, we could very have easily adopted our budget.
How many municipalities have adopted their budgets, do you know?
Out of 566, I could probably say maybe half, you know, but we could be in a position to adopt by the end of June, could be.
All right, next.
Two, at the last council meeting at approximately the one hour twenty-three minute marker, Mr. Melham stated, we went forward without even a CFL for at least, I don't know, the last forty-five years. That is patently false. On the New Jersey state law, in particular Title 40, Section 48, colon 9, dash 140.10, municipalities are required to have a chief financial officer. To this end, Belleville has not been without a CFL in one form or another. As just one of my many counterexamples, if you look at the council agenda for April 7, 2017, you will see that Javier Silva was appointed as our new CFO by means of Resolution Number 10. Mr. Melham continuously flatters himself as a self-appointed expert on the justice law, but every day he demonstrates how little we truly know about such matters. While Mr. Melham, will Mr. Melham do the proper thing for a change and admit on the record that he was wrong about Belleville's CFO situation? I'll give him the benefit of the doubt, this was a careless oversight on his part and not another class of example of Melham mendacity.
Can you define that word?
No, but I refer to the term.
So, as Mr. Sheldon loves to do, pick apart every syllable and every context and every tone of my comments, when I said that we've gone without a CFO, I meant somebody in-house here watching the store. I can tell you that you are correct, we did, or I should say, there was a Javier Silva-appointed CFO in April 11, 2017. I can also tell you that I took office on July 1, 2018, and never once met the man, never once met him, never saw him here, never met him, and I spent forty, fifty hours a week sometimes in this building. So, what I meant and what I was saying, which I think most people understood, was that we have somebody that we pay a monthly stipend to because they have the title and they sign certain checks, but we had nobody watching the store. As a matter of fact, I would love for Mr. Sheldon to discuss the prior CFO we had before that and the fact that once she tried to expose an overtime scam, she was promptly fired by a manager that probably should have never been here, somebody that Mr. Sheldon supports thoroughly to this day, and that lawsuit then cost us a lot of money in litigation, something that we actually had to pay out a hefty sum of money for. So, maybe next council meeting, Mr. Sheldon can discuss what that really cost us when the prior CFO, who was in-house, was fired for trying to expose an overtime scam that was then never even looked at, but we did settle out that lawsuit to the prior CFO. So, perhaps Mr. Sheldon can discuss that for us all next time. Next.
Three, over the course of the last three months, I've repeatedly asked about information posted on the township's website regarding Mr. Notori's, Mr. Notori's biographies, in which he states that he has a PhD in English and Rutgers University. Since the Rutgers registrar office apparently only has a record of his attendance without being awarded a degree with this field of study, being literacy education and not English, while both the Rutgers library, the Library of Congress, and the Pro West apparently have no record of his doctoral dissertation on file, can Mr. Notori please give for the record the year in which he was awarded his PhD, along with the title of his dissertation, his thesis advisor, and the date when he successfully defended his thesis?
Next.
Next one is from Vincent Fran Tantoni. 129 Mount Prospect Avenue, almost every night, there are cars parked on the west side of Mount Prospect Avenue at Belleville. These vehicles are usually parked right up to the stop sign and in front of the fire hydrant. I never see them ticketed, why not? Also, the north side of Home Street at Union Avenue most times has vehicles parked right up to the stop sign, making it difficult to view vehicles coming from the north heading south. Enforcement, please, thanks chief.
Thanks chief. We're on it, thank you, Mr. Fran Tantoni.
Next one is from Andrea Lindsay. As a concerned Belleville resident, I ask the council how they intend to handle the daily challenges this community faces. One, how does the council plan on bringing about more equity in this town in reference to Belleville's council members, school district, police department, etc.? Two, what new training, escalation training, de-escalation training? Will Belleville's police department start enforcement among their officers? Three, how do you plan to lower the town's systematically racist statistics in regards to use of force on, force on black individuals being seventy-nine percent higher than their counterparts? And four, how will the town implement a clear focus on more community policing?
Thank you, Andrea, for the comments. Again, as I've said a few times already, beginning of this meeting, going on two and a half hours ago, Councilwoman DePena brought this topic up for conversation, we did have a good conversation, it was actually a very enlightening conversation, which actually talked about some of the things that you're mentioning here, I would refer you to the beginning of that conversation, but I will say that that's not the end of the conversation, our police chief is here, it was a very thoughtful conversation that we had, and again, it was enlightening to not just me, but I'm assuming some of the other council members, because we learned a lot. When we talk about the use of force, we learned a lot about what that means, and I would urge you to go back about two and a half hours ago and hear the chief's explanation of that, but I will also urge you to continue being involved with us and the community because we will be discussing shortly, one, a bunch of information on our website, talking about our policies and procedures, two, the chief has already committed to put additional information that's already available on his website about statistics, but we will be having what's called, we're kind of trying to get a conversation with the chief where we can be discussing some specifics, and I think everybody with him on camera, because it was hard maybe hearing just his voice in the background earlier, but with him on camera discussing some of the statistics and some of the things that he told us, numbers are numbers and they could be interpreted various different ways, we do believe that our police force and the statistics that the chief showed us, one, are self-reportable, these are not, as somebody else pointed out in the room, these are not complaints that have been received, these are self-reportable numbers, that when our officers come back in after an arrest, they self-report the actions that they had to take. So, if you didn't hear that conversation, I urge you to go back to hear that, but I also urge you to stay involved because we will be having these conversations in the very near future. Last item there, community policing, we have a very, very strong community policing program, something that this chief has taken to another level, he's always evolving it, always going above and beyond, and I assume that, as he likes to say, there's always room for improvement, and I'm assuming we're going to be seeing some of those improvements coming up shortly, but I do urge you to stay involved. I think I kind of hit most of the things on there, right? Yeah, okay.
Next is Jeff Manley, 56 Long Street. You have used this COVID-19 emergency to forge a agenda on all the citizen taxpayers, having silenced our voices.
A voice we're now hearing, a voice we're now hearing.
You would illegally provide healthcare to non-employees in the town through the referendum process, knowing full well that it can't be done that way. Councilmembers are non-employees and thereby not entitled to healthcare. I also understand that you have spent a great deal of taxpayer money for renovations for your office and council member offices including extensive furnishings. Did any of this work go through the legal bid process with detailed specifications? Did the contractors pay prevailing wages and log their time for reasons to accountability to the taxpayers of Belleville? Roosevelt Avenue, PSCNG gas work repaid. The sub-road made of concrete was broken at regular intervals to replace the gas laterals large enough for a man's climate. I was poorly, it was poorly compacted, filled with asphalt, and refilled as it sunk. Having never replaced the concrete sub-road with original material construction as required by publicly funded power grid improvements, it was milled today and finished paved with asphalt. Roosevelt has industrial businesses and is frequented by heavy trucks who will cause the substandard warp to sink over time, thus creating yet more wasted taxpayer money to refill and refill over time. The valley and many other roads in Belleville have many of these situations where sinking asphalt from poorly overseen work was performed. When will this council stop wasting our money and show good stewardship of the public trust? Council, show that you care and stop wasting your hard-earned money.
Mr. Iacono, can you please make a note of that Roosevelt there, PSCNG?
Yeah, I spoke to Tom Hurwitz today because we had a conversation with Mr. Manley, and Tom, Tom basically said that he did inspect it with PSCNG and what they were doing is acceptable and it's actually the practice that we've been doing with our DOT money for the last several years.
Okay.
You don't replace the concrete with concrete, but you do with asphalt, and that was coming from the town engineer.
Right, thank you for that. I don't, I don't believe we've silenced any voices, obviously, we just heard Mr. Manley's voice, so nobody's been silenced there. I don't believe that we've done illegally practice with non-employees, I am a salaried employee, my salary is listed in the administrative code, my salary is listed in the ordinance, salary ordinance, we are paid a salary, we are not paid hourly, we are not paid part-time, we are paid a salary for the job that we do. Don't believe that we're illegal and don't believe that we are part-time at all. As far as, as I mentioned about the audio/video upgrades in this room, that money for upgrading some offices up on the second floor, a lot of different things, I know everybody likes to highlight the fact that the mayor's office was lumped into there, but it was lumped into there. It was also a conference room built for auditors that have constantly been shifted around from place to place to place to place, there's also, and I'm not going to get into the specifics, but there's also a handicap accessible bathroom that had to be built. A lot of different things in there lumped in, council approved that in a bond over a year ago, had absolutely no time to do it while people were in the building, took the opportunity during COVID to actually do what the council unanimously approved in an upgrade bond and a furnishing bond over a year ago. A lot of different things included in that, not just the mayor's room, like I said, conference room for auditors and a handicap accessible bathroom, which I'm not going to go any further about it, we needed it. Anybody else?
Uh, yes. My name is Melanie Almeda.
Sure, that's true.
She says, I'm a Belleville resident of Belleville, as someone who has lived in this town for the majority of her life and someone who has a little needs growing up in this town, I only want the best for her and the generations to come. With that being said, I am calling for the resignation of First World Councilwoman Marie Burke for using racial disgusting slurs. If you need clarification, she said, this is going to be a blank, blank town. Racism has no hold in Belleville, as we are proud to be culturally diverse, we leave her out. And I have one more.
One more.
From Frank Fales, Continental Avenue. I'm so proud to be from Belleville, I believe our community does best when we come together. I would love to see the young, articulate, and intelligent organizers of last Saturday's protest collaborating with our mayor and chief of police on constructive and substantive ideas going forward. Perhaps this can be arranged. Thank you to all of those who organized, thank you to all of those who mobilized, thank you to all Belleville police that stay true to their oath, and thank you all for coming together. Finally, let's keep working together as a hashtag one Belleville.
Frank, just so you know, if you're still watching, again, I'll direct you to the point of this meeting, maybe two hours and forty minutes ago, we did have a great conversation, it was the beginning of a conversation, our police chief was involved, he's going to be involved in us in deeper conversations coming forward, and as I already mentioned, while I'm not quite sure if there's an organizer involved, but I have been in communication with about five or six young people who took the time to thoughtfully and professionally reach out to me and engage me in conversation, I have engaged them, we've been in constant conversation back and forth now for days, and those particular young people, I have told that we will be meeting, I think, next Thursday, I don't think, we'll be meeting on next Thursday, I don't have any specifics yet, but I am greatly looking forward to speaking with them. I think that's, Madam Clerk, anything else for public comments?
I checked, no.
You're sure? All right, council, let's do this, we are now, wait, I need a motion to close public comments.
Motion.
Got it. All fair. All right, we're done. Public comments are done, we are moving to resolutions. Please be considerate of time in your decisions to pull things.
Do you need a motion to move the consent agenda?
All right, that was fast, hold on. Steve, Steve Martino, item number seven, which is the bridge, does that mean that we can take the resolution off the table? Is that the same?
No, that has to, yeah, yeah. Non-equity is back on the agenda.
Bridge is back on, I'm sorry, bridge is back on, I'm sorry, do we have to keep? Well, that'd be later, all right, so we don't care about that. I'm not going to put it off the agenda, but I will take a moment to say that item number five is something, it's another game changer for this town, something else that was started, a lot of things, listen, a lot of things were started by previous administrations and a lot of things were started by previous councils. This council is the council that's actually pushing a lot of things over the finish line, no pun intended, because this is a contract to award a brand-new field up at the municipal stadium complex at the high school, new practice field, new turf, two new ball fields, lighting, all kinds of goodies going on up there, we are taking the step today to push this over the finish line and actually get it done. It's one thing to plan it, it's one thing to show a nice rendering during a political campaign, it's another thing to actually see it all the way through and get it done, and this is the first step to getting it done, I thank you, council colleagues, another feather in our cap of victories. Other than that, I have nothing specifically to pull off. I did hear Councilman Revelle make a motion to move the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to move the consent agenda, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosvally, DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notori?
Perdido.
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
She's on mute. Yes, I'm assuming there is no new business?
No new business.
Thank you, everybody.
Wait, you gotta, you gotta take that resolution.
Do you want to, they'll just die next, all right, let's do it. We are gonna, council, stay with me another minute or so, section B, resolution on the table, learn it, council, we are taking this off and defeating it.
No.
No, we're doing it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's why I was confused. I thought seven had something to do with that.
No.
No, 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 I'm sorry, guys.
That's a different, seven.
Totally different ballgame.
Non-equity is.
I'm sorry, council, we have to take this off, and we are being advised that this is something that we have to, we should pass. Not defeat, but pass. So, I need first, a motion to take it off the table.
Motion.
We have a motion, take it off. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Take no.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.